All right, I will now open our regular city council meeting of Lubbock City Council for February 25th, 2025. The city council recessed into executive session in accordance with the Texas Government Code Sections 551.071 to consult with and seek the advice of the city's legal counsel, 551.072, to discuss the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property in Section 551.087 regarding economic development. The city council is now recessing at 12:34. All right, city council now reconvening in open session at 2:25 PM, and we'll take up our ceremonial items. I'm going to call up Pastor Jared Baker of Glad Tidings Church on 50th and Avenue S or something like that. Q, is it really on Q? Is that what your address is? And he's going to lead us in prayer. And after that, our mayor pro tem will lead us in our pledges of allegiance. Would you please stand as you're able?
I want to thank the mayor and city council for inviting me to pray, open up in prayer. Amen. And Paul the Apostle, who wrote over half the New Testament, he told his spiritual son in the faith, Timothy, the first thing he wanted him to do was to pray for those who were in leadership. And at our church, we take that very seriously. We do prayer every Tuesday at 11 o'clock, and we did the same thing this morning, and we pray for the mayor's office, for the city council, for those who are in leadership here in the city of Lubbock, that we can be at peace, that we can follow the will and the ways of God. And I wanted to read one of his prayers in Ephesians, Chapter 2, 17 through 24. The Apostle Paul prayed, he said that the God of our Lord Jesus Christ, the Father of glory, that he would give unto you the spirit of wisdom and revelation in the knowledge of him, that the eyes of your understanding would be enlightened, that you would know what is the hope of his calling, what are the riches of the glory of his inheritance in the saints, what is the exceeding greatness of his power toward us who believe, according to the working of his mighty power, which he worked in Christ when he raised him from the dead and seated him at his right hand in heavenly places, far above all principality, power, might, and dominion, every name that is named, not only in this age, but also in that which is to come. And he's put all things under his feet and given him to be the head over all things to the church, which is his body, the fullness of him who fills all and all. So Father, according to your word, I just pray that the council, the mayor's office, the leadership of this city, even today, and the issues that they may be facing, would be filled with a spirit of wisdom, revelation, knowledge, and understanding in all of your ways of doing things, that they would lead this city in wisdom, that they would lead this city in peace, that they would lead this city in justice. And Lord, I thank you today that as we agree with the very prayers of the Apostle Paul written 2,000 years ago, they are still as powerful today, in the name of Jesus. Amen. Amen. Thank you all.
And now you'll join me in the pledge of allegiance honoring our country and our state flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
All right, I now call the meeting to order, and I would take up citizen comments, but as far as I know, no one has signed up for citizen comments today. Is that correct? All right. Just to let you know, you do have an opportunity to make citizen comments before our meetings. If you sign up, you can speak to any item on our council agenda, and you're provided three minutes' time to address the council. We welcome that at every meeting, but we have no one today to do that. So we'll now take up item 4.1, the minutes from January 28th, 2025, regular city council meeting. Is there a motion to approve item 4.1? Is there a second? Second. Any discussion, any changes, any amendments? If I see none, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. I hear none. The motion approved, passes by unanimous vote. All right. We're now going to take up item 5 on our consent agenda. Normally, you know, we can pass these by consent without discussion unless someone pulls an item from it, and I have pulled item 5.10 from the consent agenda today. So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item 5.10? Is there a second? Is there any discussion or opposition to that? Now let it be known, if you are in favor, I'll let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. I hear none. That motion passes unanimously. All right, our consent agenda is passed other than 5.10. We'll take that up now. This is considered a resolution authorizing me to execute a purchase order with VWR International LLC for the purchase of, and get ready for this, 6495 triple quadrupole liquid chromatograph mass spectrophotometer. That's what dragged my attention to this little particular item. I had to practice saying that a number of times. I had no idea what that meant. A lot of fancy words there. I wanted to know a little bit more, and I can imagine maybe some citizens looking at this going, what the heck are we buying there? It's not the flux capacitor. I know that much. But would if you would sort of let us know what we're doing, test this. This is something that allows us to test for chemicals in our water, so tell us what we're doing here.
Good evening, Council Mayor. You did a very good job of pronouncing that. So you are correct. This is the purchase of, I'll try it myself, a triple quadrupole liquid chromatograph mass spectrophotometer. This is to enable us to test for forever chemicals, as we call it, as EPA calls it in regulations. And to kind of start, what might you ask are forever chemicals? Forever chemicals are a group of polyfluoral alkyl, another good word to say, but we usually call them PFAS chemicals. And these are chemicals that are typically used in many consumer products and have been manufactured in the United States since 1940s. They're known as forever chemicals because they don't really break down easily in the environment. They can also accumulate over time, and there is evidence that they are harmful to humans. Most of these are found in your nonstick cookware, so your nonstick cookware where you make sure your eggs don't stick to the pan, water resistance fabric, stain repellents, and also firefighting foam. Why are we having this discussion? Well, the EPA has just started and starting to establish new nationwide enforceable water standards related to these chemicals in our drinking standards. They've laid out a timeline to go ahead and work and monitor and regulate these chemicals. And within the first three years of establishing these rules, between 2024 and 2027, every city is required to start their initial monitoring of PFAS, and that's kind of where we are right now and why we're having this discussion. Starting in three years after that, we're required to publish our initial monitoring reports through what we call our annual water quality report, which is delivered to all of our citizens annually, and that will have the results of any of those, if we have any PFAS in our water, starting in 2027. In 2029, starting five years after this, for all municipalities are required to comply with what they call the maximum contaminant levels, or MCLs, that they established. And one thing that they established are four to 10 parts per trillion. It's kind of a hard thing to comprehend and understand. We typically work in parts per million, and this is something that they're putting regulations in parts per trillion, which is why we're looking at such specific equipment. What is a part per trillion? That is essentially one drop of food coloring in 18 million gallons of water, or one drop of food coloring in 20 Olympic-sized swimming pools. One thing that we've kind of put together, and I kind of like it, it's one tenth of an inch between the distance of the earth and the moon. That is what one trillionth, part of a trillion is, kind of how small it is. How will the city of Lubbock monitor this PFAS in such small quantities? And that's with the purchase of a triple quadrupole liquid chromatograph mass spectrophotometer is this primary incident that we're looking to purchase here. This equipment will be used, and we'll be housed at our North Water Treatment Plant. We have a water laboratory right there at that treatment plant, and will be owned and operated by the city of Lubbock and operated by our city staff. So we have a permitted and regulatory monitored laboratory there, and so they'll be the ones doing it. This purchase is in the amount of $572,082.59. With that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
All right, does anyone have any questions? So a lot of people maybe are aware of, you see ads on TV all the time, you know, for lawyers, I don't want to badmouth a lawyer, but you know, there is concern over the existence of these forever chemicals, substances in our drinking water. We don't exactly know all the ins and outs of it, but we're required to monitor for them at an incredibly, incredibly discreet level. And so it's not inexpensive to do that, but it's part of our whole process of making sure that our water does meet all quality standards. And, you know, Lubbock's water is of the highest quality. And so I just want folks to know that we are ahead of this process. We are, if you see this on there going, why are we spending this kind of money for this kind of a piece of equipment? That's why we have to do it, and that's why we are doing it. So we're concerned about that, even though we don't know all the effects of it, but thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. All right, so now I will entertain a motion to accept item, or to approve item 4.10. All right, any further discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. I hear none. It passes unanimously. All right, let's move on now to our regular agenda. Council will take up the regular agenda and start with item 6.1 regarding the mayor's appointments to the Lubbock Housing Authority Board of Commissioners. I'm now going to call on our city secretary, Courtney Paz, to provide our staff briefing on this.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll just read this statement into the record. As these are your appointments, it's just for historical needs. I hereby read into the record and declare that the mayor's three appointments to the Lubbock Housing Authority Board of Commissioners are Toby Cecil, Basilia Mann, and Jerry Ramirez.
Thank you, Ms. Paz. That doesn't require a vote. All right, take up item 6.2 and call on the city manager to provide a briefing at this time on item 6.2.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. I know this is the day we have long awaited. This is the presentation of your fiscal year ended September 30, 2024, comprehensive annual financial report. Today, we call that an ACFIR. You used to call it the audit. So your first presenter today will be Ms. Jennifer Ripka with Weaver, and she will take you through her slides, take any questions you may have, and then we'll bring Mr. Jimenez back and go over a bunch of numbers that we can look at. So are we ready, Joe?
Yes, sir.
All right, Ms. Ripka, please.
My name is Jennifer Ripka. I'm the partner on the external audit with Weaver, and this is just some information about our engagement team, which includes both the city as well as LPNL, which we presented to last week. I'll briefly go through our audit process, and then I'll go through some required communications, and then open it up to you all for any questions that you may have. So we do perform the audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, as well as generally accepted government auditing standards. That's over both the financial statements, as well as the federal and state financial assistance that the city receives. So we do have that financial statement audit, in which we're going to be looking at the ACFIR itself, but then separate from that, we do do an audit over the federal and state financial assistance that the city receives. And so various departments across the city do receive assistance, health, transit, et cetera, and so we are looking at that separate from the financial statements. In terms of compliance outside of federal and state financial assistance, we're also looking at compliance with various types of laws and regulations. The biggest going to be Public Funds Investment Act, as well as the passenger facility charges. This is our audit timeline. You know, unfortunately for your staff, the audit is kind of ongoing. It takes a considerable amount of time from start all the way to finish. And so while your staff is doing their job here at the city, they're also having to prepare for the audit. The overview, we didn't make a lot of changes from what we had set forth as our strategy at the beginning of the audit, and so not a lot of changes there. But as far as the ending or the final result, we have issued an unmodified opinion, that's a clean opinion. It's the highest level assurance that can be placed on a set of financial statements, and we had that on both the financial statements, as well as compliance over the state and federal financial assistance. In terms of uncorrected misstatements, the city had none, and there were no audit adjustments that we proposed as part of our audit. So when you look at it from an audit perspective, having a clean opinion, having no audit adjustments, and no proposed audit adjustments, that management passed on, as well as no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses, that's really the best that you can get. These are the significant risks that were identified as part of, you know, our team, charges for services, so utilities across the board, so water, sewer, refuse, LPNL, the electric, et cetera, that's all going to be in that charges for services piece. And then the grants, federal and state financial assistance, we're looking at accuracy cutoff, as well as existence and occurrence. We noted no findings when we did our testing associated with those. This is just required communications in written form. I won't go through these in detail, but the biggest thing to note is we didn't have a significant change in accounting principles this year. We did implement GASB statement 100, but it didn't have an impact on the city's financial statements. As far as significant accounting estimates, the pension, the other post-employment benefit liabilities and expenses, as well as incurred but not reported liabilities, those are going to be the largest estimates here at the city that management could incorporate bias into. Of course, we go through the process of looking at the key factors and assumptions that are utilized as part of our testing, and we noted those to be reasonable during the course of our testing. Moving forward, no suspected fraud, no unusual transactions, no difficulties that were encountered during the course of the audit. We do require written representations as part of our final step of the audit, just noting that there was nothing that was withheld from us as part of the audit process. And as far as an audit goes, you all have a great team. I do want to, you know, say that. Again, it does take a lot, a lot of effort to go through the audit, because you're doing that not only as part of, you know, your day-to-day work, but for a considerable amount of time. And then, of course, we're looking back to the prior fiscal year. They're moving into budget, and so having to go back and looking at that, it can be, you know, a lot to have to handle during the course of the year. So I do appreciate everything that they do during, during all their, their work for getting this, where we can complete this audit timely for you all. That's all I have. If you have any questions, happy to answer those.
Any questions for Ms. Ripka? All right, thank you very much, Joe.
Thank you.
Afternoon, Mayor and Council. Before I start, I did want to mention my staff, again, my accounting staff, I know she did it, but I really wanted to thank them for all the hard work that they put into this. This is a long process, as she said. Ms. Sherr is from the finance department, so it's a team collaboration. It's a, it's a daunting task, let me say that, all the numbers, and I got here kind of in the December timeframe, so they were already up and going when this happened. So I really wanted to thank them personally for all the work they've done, and they do a good job of that.
Are you saying they did all the work, Joe? And you just, you saying they did all the work?
No, no, sir. I said they did all the work, so I'm here presenting it for you. So let's jump into general fund, the first thing we're going to talk about. So what I wanted you all to see is, you can see here that the year-over-year growth for general fund keeps increasing, but you would expect that as your city grows, so does your expenses. But what I really wanted to point out here is that five-year annual box at the top, so you can see that our revenues average about 4.6, five-year average increase, and about 4.8 in expenses. But if you correlate that to your population and inflation of 4.7%, that's pretty much spot on, so you would expect to see increases in general fund as your population grows, and so does inflation. Another good stat is that box right there on the five-year average per capita. You can see that over the last five years, that has slightly decreased. So for your revenue, it's 0.4%. For your expenses, it's 0.8%. So what that really is telling you is that your overall general fund cost per citizen is really, is really lower than, instead of going up. So every part that each citizen pays for the general fund, it's going down. As you know, sales tax and property tax are the biggest revenues in your general fund. Our sales tax increased about 2.3% year-over-year. We had 99.2 million for fiscal year 2324. And your property taxes, that went up about 11.3% from 76.3 to 84.9 million. Again, we need to remember, this is not due to increase in taxes, this is just the new homes that have come on the LCAT tax roll. So as there's new homes coming on the tax roll, we see the benefit of that increase in our taxes. Franchise fees have come down a little bit, about 9.9% from 31.7 to 28.6 million. This is strictly driven by less homes being built this past fiscal year. The other one I want to talk about is your interest rate. You can see that looks like a large number, 70.8%, but it's really only gone up from 3.9 million to 6.7 million. And again, this is just the environment that the interest rates are in right now, so we're seeing better returns on our investment. And the same thing with the revenue per capita, that's pretty much just broken down, that's your, your sales tax, your property taxes, and that's the revenue that each citizen is generating on, on the general fund. Our expenses, my capital.
Let me stop you just one second, and just let the council know too, as you go through, because you're going to go through a number of slides, if you have a particular question about information on one slide, it might be easier to raise the question while we're on that slide rather than to flip back to it. So just let me know if you have a question. Thank you.
Sorry, I should address that. Any questions on that one? Okay, we'll move to our general fund expenses. As most of you know, public safety is the main driver of general funds. So you can see that police and fire have increased about 7.9% and 6.8% respectively. Again, these total about 59% of the total general fund expenses is your police and fire. Your transfers, again, as I mentioned, they've gone down to your franchise fee transfer. Public works is up about 7.1%. That's just, you know, you increase in your public works, you increase in your roads. And on the same, on the same, on the same manner, your expense per capita for police and fire, so this is a breakdown on the bottom chart that shows how much each of these services costs per, per citizen registered here in the city of Lubbock. So you can see, police went up from about $310 a person to about $332 a person. Again, this is with an increase in staff for police and increased expenses as well. So you'll see that kind of, that trend throughout, you'll see that on fire as well. It went up from about $251 to about $266 a person. So again, those are the ones I really wanted to hit on. Those are your biggest expenses in your general fund, and you know, public safety is one thing that we really do like to disclose on your, on your general fund side.
All right, Joe, would you explain what transfers are?
So transfers are actually, those are actually transfers out from the city. I'll let Mr. Atkinson take that one. I want him to speak on the transfers.
Transfers can take many forms, so probably the one that we're all most familiar with will be transfers to capital. So you're moving dollars over to fund, be that vehicles, certain projects, street maintenance, items like that. Transfers in are going to be fees that come to the general fund, mainly from your other funds, which would be enterprise funds, such as Lubbock Power and Light, water and sewer, et cetera, and that's how they pay their piece of the IT system, the radio system, the fleet operations, stuff like that.
And so what would be, is every other category increased, what would be accounting for the decrease in the transfers then?
The general flow of what we were doing for, you know, mainly capital, mainly vehicles in any particular year.
Thank you.
Moving on, I want to talk about the key metrics. I really do like this chart right here, so it really tells you, what that green line is telling you is our general reserve policy. What you want to do is have 20% of a general policy reserved, and so you can see, over the past years, we've been above that 20%. For this year, we have about $94.4 million in reserves, which is about 33.7 of our, our target policy, of our target level. So again, 20% is the threshold that's kind of set for cities to keep in your, in your general reserves, but we have about 94 million, which totals about 33.7%. So we're above that 20% mark, that threshold that's set for our general reserve calculation.
Mr. Mayor, if I might add a little, little color to that, this is all based on year-end close at September 30th, as we talked about earlier. The distance between the green line and the top, so on, on the 24 numbers, the 33.7 and the green line, that is that unassigned reserve that we all work on as we go through budget. So if you'll recall, we spent that down. We were going to end up at just a little over 10. We had some of those changes from Lubbock Power and Light, and if you were to look at this dated 10/1, you would see that that's about a $12 million number. You still have all the 20% you're required to have, and then we have that roughly 12 that carries us over as we go through this year and start the budget.
So that's all the stats I have for general fund. Unless there's any questions, I'll move off on to the enterprise funds. Starting off with the enterprise, we got your water and wastewater. As you can tell, you know, those, those funds are very healthy. We had about $85.9 million in revenues and transfers coming in. Our expenses were about 148, about 142.8 million on the transfers. So you can see, year-over-year, our revenues and transfers in are more than the expenses going out, so that's a sign of a healthy fund. This is a good, good metric right here. This is our debt service cover metric, so what you can see is, for fiscal year 24, our debt service metrics increased from 1.29 to 1.56. Again, this is the debt service payment against your unrestricted liability. So you have that, so what this is saying is that we do have one and a half times to cover the debt service in the water and wastewater fund. Your debt to capitalization has decreased from 39.1% to 36.9%. This is the good sign, so the lower this is, the better it is. This is saying that you have more assets to your debt. So this is continued to increase as we're starting to build these projects out and put them on the books, and as we pay off debt, this, this, this number continues to, to go down, and, and so you can see it went down from 39.1% last year to 36.9% in this fiscal year.
And so the top graph, we want to see going up to hit the orange light, and then, you know, ideally, the green line, right?
Yes, sir, the green line.
And then you want it to fall below the green line on the bottom to get your best bond rating for.
Yes, sir, correct. And so I should have mentioned, so your yellow line, or your orange line that's across is your AA range, that's kind of the threshold that they set for your AA credit rating agencies. And then the green one is your AAA rating agencies. We're AA, so we try to stay within that orange line on our calculations.
And why do we want to stay there?
So we can get better rates.
So we get better rates. Thank you.
Mayor, if I could add, excuse me, maybe one comment to the information on the top, the debt service coverage. You're spot on, so that's how well we can cover the debt with the revenues. The green line, the AAA range on water and wastewater is a 2.0 coverage. In our current fiscal policies, we are not trying to achieve 2.0 coverage. In my opinion, we're taking more dollars than we need from our taxpayers to hold merely to hit a metric. I strongly suggest we stay in the AA range on this category, and we continue moving. We're in AAA on the one on the bottom of the screen, but you will not see us bring you rates and other budgets that are going to cause the debt service coverage to get much above, or ideally, much below, the AA line on the coverage. I just don't feel like absent other guidance that we need to take that much money and just hold it.
And I think that's a council decision. I think at least to this point, we're comfortable with how we're doing that here, so thank you.
All right, next is your airport fund. Again, your airport fund is very healthy. You see your revenue and transfers in are about 27 million compared to 25.5 million. If you look back, 2022, you know, that was the, the time right after COVID, which travel was less, but you're seeing that the traveling is getting back to the numbers that we saw, and even increasing. So that's a good sign that the airport revenues and expenses have really come back to their norms from 2022. Moving on is stormwater. Stormwater has decreased from 33.6 million in revenues to 28.2. Again, this is directly reflected of in 2022, we reduced the stormwater rate, so when you So when you reduce the rates, you expect to see less revenue coming in for the, uh, enterprise fund. So that thirty-three point six million to twenty-eight point two million in revenues is, is direct correlation with a decrease in rates, uh, in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three.
And Joe, we reduced those rates. Why?
Uh-
Jared, you going to turn to Jared?
Yeah, Port, Mr. Jimenez wasn't here, Mayor, as we did that.
I know he was, and I'm asking you these questions, but-
So a quick background, um, the stormwater fund, and we all know why it started. We were dealing with the overflows in the playa and flooding businesses and homes and all that. Very successful, but very expensive. And in effect, the stormwater fund was largely a debt service fund. So big projects, lots of dollars to do them, and it was consuming those revenues. We've been very successful in paying down that debt. We continue to do so. We knew coming in that we had a chance to lower those rates, which we did, also with the understanding that our future goal for the stormwater fund, yes, there will still be large projects, not like what we saw in early two thousands. There'll still be big projects, but they'll be fewer and farther between. Rather, we need now to move that into a maintenance mode and to do such with cash. So that is why you see the gap between the expense and the revenue, and you'll see the green lines slowly tick up as we're able to pick up all that system maintenance we need to do and to do it with largely cash. So that was the plan there.
All right, thank you. And that's one of those areas in which we did, were able to reduce the rates somewhat.
That is correct, and there will be a time in the near future that you'll get to look at it again.
Yes, thank you. Okay.
Moving on to your debt and pension funds, um, so what this is, this is a city of Lubbock debt profile. I know this is kind of one of the, uh, the highlights of budget and your, your act for so. Uh, to date, um, as of, um, fiscal year twenty-three, or fiscal year twenty-four, our total principal and interest is about one point eight billion dollars. You can see the, uh, the majority of this belongs to Lubbock Power and Light, uh, for seven hundred and forty-one point one million. What I always like to harp on is that that was for the build-out of the transition to ERCOT. So remember, a lot of the debt that's with Lubbock Power and Light is T cost debt, so it's transmission-related debt. So you actually, the citizens, your local citizens, don't pay for that. The other TDUs in the electric market are the one paying for the majority of that debt. We call that the transmission cost of service. So a lot of that built out for the ERCOT market and the debt associated with Lubbock Power and Light, you're getting a rate of return on that versus just collecting that from your cus- or your citizens here in the city of Lubbock. Um, your water and wastewater fund, again, there are four hundred and thirty-four point nine million to date. Uh, general fund is three hundred and sixty-nine point eight million against general fund. Uh, the increase on that is pretty much streets, you know, the development, the growth of the city, us, uh, preparing to issue bonds for, uh, the development of, of streets here in the city of Lubbock. Uh, so those price charges kind of give you a breakdown. Your user fee-supported debt is seventy-nine point eight, and your tax-supported is twenty-two, twenty-point-two percent. So again, remember, your user fee-supported debt is strictly based on revenues collected through those enterprise funds. So when you go out to build a water project, uh, that re- that is related to water, you'll collect those through the water rate fund and so on for all the util- uh, the utilities in the enterprise funds. Um, any questions on that? Okay, moving on is the city of Lubbock pensions. Again, this is your TMRS rate. Uh, TRMS holds this. We, we really don't do anything with this. We just get the reports from them annually on the TMRS. But what is, what I wanted to point out was your assumed, or your actual net rate of return on fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five has increased from a negative seven point three-five to a positive eleven point six-four. Uh, what that's saying is the market's getting back, they're getting a better return on their investments. Uh, so we, we expect to see that to continue to happen in the future years. Again, I want to make sure that you all understand that the, the rate of return metric that used for two thousand and twenty-four is in a one-year lag. So this is actually the December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three rate. So as the markets are doing good and the economic environment is good right now, we expect to see, uh, an increase or a level, um, rate of return for next year, two thousand and twenty-four. So when we get the two thousand and twenty-five numbers, those will have the two thousand and twenty-four rate of returns from TMRS. Uh, the same goes with fire. Fire's in a position where they're, they're really rebounding. And again, this is really driven by the environment of the, uh, economy right now. You're, you're getting a lot of return on your investments, so for those years where you were lagging on that, you're really making it up over this year, the previous year, than this, uh, past year that happened. So, uh, that's something we do monitor, so we'll, we'll keep an eye on it and bring you back, um, you know, where we're at for next fiscal year. Any questions on that? So that, that was the last of my slides unless there's any questions. Uh, I got he, me and my staff, and we're happy to address, uh, anything. Again, I really want to thank them. Like I said, I came in late into the game, so I've been trying to get up to speed on that. There's, there's a lot to learn, but, you know, I'm, I'm really excited to be here and, uh, and ready to take on the challenge.
All right, any questions? All right, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, the, uh, comprehensive financial report, I think we got a copy of it the other day. I've not had a chance to read every page in it yet. Um, I don't even know who puts that all together. Uh, it's an amazing piece of work. Appreciate all your work on it, but I think the takeaway from all this is our city is in very good hands financially. Uh, I think people, I want people to understand that. They look at the debt, and one thing in particular, you know, one point eight billion dollars, that number is bandied around a lot as, as a large number, but what a lot of people don't understand is seven hundred and forty-one million of that is, uh, to LPNL. And, uh, most cities in Texas don't have that kind of debt. They don't carry, they don't own or didn't own their utility or their transmission line. So if you compare us against other cities who don't have that, we're in very good shape, and even that is, uh, you know, fee-based and paid for by the users, uh, on it. So I know people understand fee and tax are just both three-letter words, you know, one is interchangeable, but again, a lot of our stuff here is fee-based, and I think that's a, a very good way because it's transparent. People know what they're getting when you pay a fee. You know very much what you're getting for that fee. So, um, I thank you very much, Joe, appreciate it, and now we'll move on. Oh, we got a, excuse me. So without a, um, sure.
There, there is a vote on-
There's a resolution, yes.
Yeah.
The resolution, resolution, all right. So now we had the briefing. I need a motion on item six point two. All right, any further discussion? None, all in favor? Let it be known, uh, by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. I hear none, so we accept that. Um, a unanimous vote, thank you very much. All right. Now we're going to conduct a, without objection, a consolidated public hearing on the zoning cases for agenda items six point three through six point six. And our council's already received in their packet staff reports from the planning, uh, department and recommendations from our planning and zoning commission, and the purpose of a public hearing is to hear from the applicant and from members of the public on the items on the agenda. The council may ask questions of the applicant or staff during the public hearing, but no discussion on the merits will be conducted by the council during the public hearing. So now I'm going to call on Christian Sager, our director of planning, to provide a brief summary of the agenda items six point three through six point six.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item six point three is zone case four thirty-seven C. The applicant is Michael Session for Raymond and Ganel Lemon. The request is a specific use for a manufactured home subdivision on property zoned low-density single-family SF-two. We sent out thirty-nine notifications, receiving one in favor. This property is located on East Broadway, west of Guava Avenue. Here's the response map showing the one neighboring property in favor. Here's an aerial view of the subject property. There are a few other residences in the area, but it is mostly surrounded by vacant land. Current zoning is low-density, single-family SF-two. It is surrounded by SF-two, and there is additional heavy commercial zoning to the west. Here's some photos of the subject property and surrounding area. Applic- uh, photos provided by the applicant. The proposed specific use is in conformance with the zoning ordinance and compatible with the surrounding area. It will not change the character of the existing development, and this property is located along East Broadway, which is a collector. Staff had no objection to the request, and the planning and zoning commission recommended approval with a unanimous vote, and I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
I see that, okay. Proceed.
Item six four is zone case three five one six. The applicant is Hugo Reed and Associates, and the request is for a zone change from low-density, single-family SF-two to heavy commercial HC. We sent out forty-four notifications, receiving one in opposition. This property is located at the southeast corner of a hundred and fourteenth Street and University Avenue. Here is the response map showing the one property in opposition. His main concern was the additional uses allowed within the heavy commercial district. Here is an aerial view of the subject property. The property is bordered to the east and south by the county, to the north by vacant land, soon to be developed with commercial uses, and a mix of commercial and residential development to the west. Current zoning is low-density, single-family SF-two. There is additional heavy commercial to the north with a mix of auto-urban commercial, SF-two, and medium-density residential to the west. Future land use plan designates this property for commercial land uses. Here's some photos of the subject property and surrounding area. Here's a graphic provided by the applicant showing the boundary of the subject property. The future land use map designation for commercial is consistent with the request for heavy commercial zoning. The zone changes in conformance with the zoning ordinance and appropriate at the proposed location. It is compatible with the surrounding area and will not change the character of the existing development. Is located along University Avenue, which is a principal arterial, and a hundred and fourteenth Street, which is a minor arterial. Staff has no objection to the request, and the planning and zoning commission recommended approval with a unanimous vote, and I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Any questions? I see that, proceed.
Item six five is zone case one seven nine four K. The applicant is AMD Engineering LLC. Request to rezone property from high-density residential to auto-urban commercial. We sent out fifty-four notifications, receiving eleven in opposition, one of which is outside the notification boundary. This property is located north of Ninety-eighth Street, west of Indiana Avenue. Here's the response map showing the ten responses that are within the four-hundred-foot notification boundary. Main concerns were noise and reduction in property value. Here's an aerial view of the subject property. There are residences to the north, churches to the east and west, and vacant property to the south. Current zoning is high-density residential district. There's a di- additional HDR zoning to the east and west, medium-density and SF-two to the north, and neighborhood commercial to the south. Future land use plan designation is for pu- is for commercial land uses. Here's some photos of the subject property and surrounding area. Here's a site plan provided by the applicant. The future land use map designation for commercial land uses is appropriate with the request. The request is in conformance with the zoning ordinance and appropriate at this location. It is compatible with the surrounding area and will not change the character of the existing development. Ninety-sixth Street is designated as a local street, and Indiana Avenue is a principal arterial. Staff has no objection to the request. The planning and zoning commission recommended approval by vote of seven to one, and I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? I see that, proceed. Mr. Rose?
Can we go back and look at the plans again?
Mm-hmm.
Kind of that. So, uh, is there a masonry wall on the, is that the west side of the building?
Correct.
And then on the north side, privacy fencing, is that right?
With a fifteen-foot landscape buffer yard, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Item six point six, zone case two nine one six F. The applicant is SK Architecture Group LLC, requesting to rezone property from industrial park to neighborhood commercial. We sent out twenty-eight notifications, receiving one in favor. This property is located south of Eighty-second, west of Euplund Avenue. Here's the one response we received in favor. Here's an aerial view of the subject property. It is developed with commercial uses along Euplund Avenue with residential further east and more commercial further west. Current zoning is industrial park. It is surrounded by industrial park to the north, south, and west, with office and neighborhood commercial to the east. Future land use plan designates this property for commercial land uses. And here's some photos of the subject property and surrounding area. Here's a site plan provided by the applicant. The future land use map designation is for heavy commercial land uses, and while this request is for a commercial district that is more restrictive, it would still be appropriate along Euplund Avenue. The proposed zone changes in conformance with the zoning ordinance and appropriate at this location. Is compatible with the surrounding area and will not change the character of the existing development. Euplund Avenue is designated as a principal arterial. Staff has no objection to this request, and the planning and zoning commission recommended approval with a unanimous vote, and I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Any questions from Ms. Sager? I see that, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, I'll now open the public hearing on a giant item, uh, agenda items six point three through six point six, and if you wish to speak in favor of, um, any of these items, if you would come forward now, state your name and address when you come to the podium. Is anyone here, uh, wishing to speak in favor of any of these items today?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council members. I'm Terry Holman with Hugo Reed and Associates. We're at sixteen oh one Avenue N. I'm representing item six point four. I'm just here to answer any questions, if you have any. There was one letter of opposition on mine. I reached out to that individual, invited him to discuss with me, and I had never heard back, but I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Any questions from Mr. Holman? Thank you very much. Anyone else here wishing to speak in favor of one of the items?
Afternoon, Mayor, Council. My name is Will Stevens with AMD Engineering, uh, speaking on agenda item six point five. We did reach out or attempt to reach out to all eleven neighbors that sent in letters of opposition. We weren't able to, to reach everybody, but those we did talk to, you know, they kind of spurred the site plan that you guys saw, you know, specifically the buffer yard and the seven-foot privacy fence along the north. And the other thing I'll bring up on the site plan, and, and I may bring it up on here if I need to, but we wanted to put that site plan together to show the neighbors kind of what our plan was, um, and focus on the fact that we aren't putting a driveway on Ninety-sixth. We will have the buffer yard along north and west, and then, um, we tried to shift that commercial driveway as far south as we could, keep traffic away from neighborhoods. So I'll be happy to answer any other questions if you got them. Thank you.
Anyone else here today to speak in favor of any of the items? Anyone here today to speak in opposition to any of the items? Please come forward, state your name and your address, please.
Good afternoon, Gabriel Sanchez, SK Architecture Group, eight three fifty-five Euplund Avenue. It's for, um, item six point six. Um, we're developing this track of land. Just want to say that the, the size of the lots, they don't really fit the zoning, and we're here if you have any questions.
Anyone have any questions? All right, anyone else here to speak in opposition to any of these items? Please come forward, yes.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilwomen and Councilmen. I appreciate your time.
Please, please step a little closer to the microphone, if you would. Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Good afternoon. I appreciate your time, each and every one of you. My name is Billy Stelzer, and I am opposed to the car wash on item six point five, planning District Four, for the car wash. I brought a letter down here last week for each one of you. I hope you've received this and have been able to read it. These are my feelings on the car wash across from the duplexes. I own one of the duplexes. And I've talked to several of my friends that own their duplexes. We're all against it. There have been eleven letters responding back to your comments of the, uh, forms that you sent out for us to oppose or accept, and eleven have opposed it. You'll have to forgive me, I'm a little nervous. This track of, track of land should be reserved for residential dwelling only. There are plenty of other commercial spaces on Ninety-eighth- There are plenty of other commercial spaces on Ninety-eighth and Indiana and other places that car washes can be built. If this zone change goes through, this will have a negative impact on our home values. I want you to consider where you live, where you reside with your families. Would you want a car wash built across the street from where you and your family live? Your children, your grandchildren being at your home? There's going to be a lot of loud noise that drain off. And does the city need that many car washes? If you will go to Ninety-second and Indiana, there's a car wash there. Let's see. I thought I had the name of it down. But there's a car wash in a business addition at Eighty-third and Indiana. If you will go out south, there is another car wash at one hundred and twenty-sixth and Indiana. This company is wanting to put one right in the middle of that area, two-and-a-half-mile area. I don't think that's a good place to put a car wash. These people have lived there. That's their home. They don't want a loud, noisy car wash across the street from them. There's going to be a lot of extra vehicles, a lot of extra trash. Even if they put a barrier wall up, you're still going to hear that noise. Just stop and think. Get a cup of coffee some morning about seven or seven-thirty and go sit by a car wash and see how noisy that is. That is not a place for a car wash, to change that zone to a business zone. So we would appreciate you turning this car wash zoning down, rejecting it. I know there's been eleven residents to send in their letters that they are opposed to this. And I would appreciate if you would consider us, and thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to any of these items?
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. My name is Marcus Hurd, thirty-four oh-six, Ninety-sixth. My front door would be right across the street from the proposed car wash. And it's a big concern for me. Yesterday, I spent some time, it was a beautiful day, and went by some additional Mighty Wash car washes. And they're pretty much all in zoning that is strictly all commercial. Hundred and fourteenth Streets across HEB, Eighty-second and Milwaukee is all commercial. West Nineteenth Street, all commercial. Fiftieth Street across from Monterey, all commercial. There is only one commercial lot next to the proposed lot, but there's also the residences across the street also. And that's one of the reasons the zoning board voted to approve it, was because there was a commercial lot adjacent to it. On the east side of Indiana is Indiana Avenue Baptist Church, and they have a huge lot over there. There is no commercial zoning across the street from this proposed car wash. No, no commercial at all. There is commercial, as you all know, on Eighty-second Street. So this proposed zoning change is two blocks north of Eighty-second Street. So it's kind of an albatross out there all by itself. And I think it would be an intrusion into our neighborhood. The other thing I looked when I went around some of these car washes, there's been a proposed for a seven-foot fence with some nice shrubbery or trees or to that effect. So I checked up on Mighty Wash, and I went to their car wash at Eightieth or Eighty-first and University and looked at what they had done with the landscaping. And I parked my car on the north side of the car wash, on the opposite side of the street, which would be my front yard. And when I rolled down my windows, I could hear the vacuums, because there wasn't just one vacuum running. There were seven or eight or nine vacuums running, because it was a busy day. And I could actually hear the vacuums running from across the street. Also, their landscape, they had like eight or nine trees running from east to west on Eightieth Street. And it had not been maintained. There were splotches of dirt with grass, dirt with grass, dirt with grass. They're either not watering it, or it's not all grass like I think it was probably proposed to be. So I know from that that they, the seven-foot fence across from my house may look nice when it's constructed, but I don't have much faith that it's going to be that way. There was also another car wash at forty-four forty-four South Loop two-eighty-nine that faces the loop. I can understand why it was zoned that way, because it's right there on the loop. That's understandable. And their grass looked fine, but they have an unusual lot size where it comes to a T-intersection. And they have stone there, rock and stone. And it was all mixed up, and there was weeds growing up in it. I just am leery about to get the zoning change saying, "We're going to have a beautiful fence and beautiful trees and beautiful everything." And then two and three years later, when the city council's not involved, that it's not going to be appropriate for our neighborhood. So those are my main concerns.
Anyone else here to speak in opposition to any of the items? All right. I will now close the public hearing on these items at three-twenty-one. Is there a motion to approve item agendas six-point-three through six-point-six? Is there a second? I have a motion and a second. Okay, discussion. Anyone wish to discuss any of these items? All right. I will call for the vote. All in favor of approving items, agenda items six-point-three through six-point-six, please let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Say nay. All right. That motion passes, I believe, six to one. Is that correct? All right. Well, I'll take up item six-point-seven, agenda item six-point-seven, a public hearing, consideration of an ordinance for a zoning change. We'll start this again with a presentation from Ms. Sager. The purpose of this public hearing is to hear from the applicant and members of the public, and we can ask questions of the applicant or staff during this meeting, but no discussion of the merits are held during the public hearing section of this. So, Ms. Sager, again, would you provide us with a brief summary on item six-point-seven?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item six-point-seven is Zone Case three-one-seven-four-D. The applicant is AMD Engineering LLC. Request is to rezone property from low-density, single-family SF2 and heavy commercial HC to high-density residential district HDR. We've sent out sixty-one notifications. We have received eighty-one in favor, seventy-two of which are outside the notification boundary, twenty-eight in opposition, six of which are outside the notification boundary. This property is located south of Nineteenth Street, west of University Avenue. Here's the map showing the responses we have received within the notification boundary. Since the written opposition from property owners within the two-hundred-foot notification boundary exceeds twenty percent of the land area, a supermajority vote of six out of seven council votes will be required for the case to be approved. Because I know the question will come up, we did receive a written response from the property owner of State Bridge Suites to the east, which is why it is reflected on the map. Here's an aerial view of the subject property. There is a hotel to the east. There is apartments and other commercial buildings to the west. Texas Tech University to the north and residential to the south. Current zoning is heavy commercial and SF2, single-family. There is high-density residential to the east and west, SF2 to the north, and SF2 and neighborhood commercial to the south. Here is a zoomed-in version, so you can see the portion of the request that is SF2 zoning. It is that southern piece on lots three and four. Future land use plan designates this property for commercial land uses. And here are some photos of the subject property and surrounding area. Here's a graphic provided by the applicant showing the boundary of the subject property. Here are, this is not a comprehensive list. This is just a handful of examples of uses that are allowed within the current heavy commercial district and high-density residential requested district. The future land use map designation is for commercial land uses. While the proposed zone change to HDR is not in conformance with this designation, it is appropriate in this location, as the HDR district does allow for a combination of residential, commercial, and mixed use. The proposed zone changes in conformance with the zoning ordinance and will be appropriate at the proposed location. It is compatible with the surrounding area and adjacent HDR zoning to the east and west. And it is located on Nineteenth Street, which is designated as a principal arterial. Staff has no objection to the request. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by vote of seven to one. And again, the supermajority vote will be required. I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Sager? I see that. Thank you. I'll now open the public hearing on item six-point-one, six-point-seven. So please, if you come forward and you wish to speak in favor of this item, I would ask that you come forward now, and when you come forward, give us your name and address. So anyone wishing to speak in favor?
Good afternoon, Council. Corey Doolan with AMD Engineering. We're at sixty-five fifteen sixty-eighth Street. We're representing Pinecrest Development Communities and on this project. Before I introduce Tyler Perlmutter, who is going to present on behalf of Pinecrest, I just wanted to bring up a few points, some things that we've discussed with the neighbors, things that came up in the, in the planning and zoning hearing. I want to just first of all point out, you know, this is a zone case for whether or not this requested zone is appropriate for this location. This, this location fronts ten lanes of arterial. We have a high-capacity water line we can tie into. These things are not going to have a negative impact on the neighborhood that is to the south of us. This is, this is the second case that I've been a part of in this, in this location. I've seen others as well. This is, this is a great fit, and this neighbor, this developer has listened to the neighbors and learned from the previous cases that have failed and presented something that really separates this property away from the rest of the neighborhood. There's no, there's no development plans for any structures facing Twentieth Street, which I think is something that we heard in the previous cases that'll be beneficial. There's no planned traffic down the, down the alley. That was a huge concern that we heard, traffic down the alley. I met with the developer and proposed contractor in the field yesterday for about an hour, and we just looked at the overhead utility lines that need to be taken down. A lot of things that are being proposed with this property are going to enhance things for the whole, whole community. It's, it's a, it's going to be an outstanding project. But just wanted to, to bring up some of, some of those things that we heard and try and answer those things ahead of time. This is, this is a great project and a great, great developer, and would be happy to answer any questions that you have. I'll be sitting over there and available. But at this time, I'd like to introduce Tyler Perlmutter with Pinecrest.
Thanks. Good afternoon, Mayor. Good afternoon, Council. My name is Tyler Perlmutter. I'm with Pinecrest, four-thirty Park Avenue in Highland Park, Illinois. Just want to thank all of you for your service to the city and really want to thank Tech Terrace and the Neighborhood Association, who's been gracious with their time, and we feel, have been very collaborative in the process. Okay, so a little bit about, about our company. We were founded in nineteen ninety-eight, and we, we focus on student housing right now and industrial properties. We've also done high-end retail centers and office. But we are a family company, and Pinecrest itself has been around since two thousand and twelve. Some of our partnerships include Metropolitan Family Services, which is a group in Chicago, Camp Out for Kids, Experience Camps, the National Skleroderma, Skleroderma Foundation, and Kids Kicking Cancer. Our motto is, "We create communities that keep residents in school." So throughout all of the design decisions that we make in our projects, the number-one goal is, "How are we going to keep our residents in school?" Here's our organization chart. I'm going to go through some of the other groups that are involved in the project. Tyner Construction, obviously a local contractor, has been involved on the upfront of the project. You all just heard from Corey and AMD, who is also local and involved in the project. And then Lassard Design, you will hear from Joseph shortly. While he is not local, he does have a lot of experience in student housing. A little bit more about our company. So to date, we've developed two thousand three hundred and forty-three beds. We have a six-hundred and fed, six-hundred-and-five-bed project that we're starting next week in College Station. And then this would be the next project in our pipeline. As I mentioned, this is our, our development at College Station. It's six-hundred-and-five beds starting next week, and it'll deliver in two thousand and twenty-seven. This is a project in Richmond, Virginia, that is currently operating, five-hundred-and-nine beds. Opened last year, and we're in our second year of lease-up. This is a project of yours, Vert City of Tennessee, three-hundred-and-eighty-two beds. This is another one that we did at the University of Pittsburgh. It was four-hundred-and-seventy-three beds. Another one we did in University of Delaware, which was four-hundred-and-forty beds. And then finally, one we did in Boise, Idaho, which was five-hundred-and-thirty-nine beds. And the reason I bring them up is that each of these projects are, you know, very specific to the location that they're in. So we don't have one set of building, you know, design that we use. We really sit down and figure out what is appropriate for the right location. Getting into the project, so we're going to cover zoning analysis, a design approach, the conceptual design, we're going to get into parking, overall project features, and then finally benefits for Lubbock. Starting with the zoning requests, as mentioned, it is a heavy commercial to HDR. There's also a small portion that's SF2 that would also be rezoned to high-density residential. If successful in getting this zone change, we would be asking for no variance to the UDC. The future use is a multifamily, vertical, mixed-use project. It's a blend between five and four stories. At its, at its maximum height, it's sixty-five feet. You can go up to seventy-five, but we're capping it at sixty-five. The bed count will be five-hundred-and-eighty-four across two-hundred-and-sixteen units. And right now, we have three-hundred-and-fifteen parking spaces on-site, and then a retail component as well. Here's the, the zoning map. Again, the, the piece here to focus on is the heavy commercial. And then you can't really see it, but as I've said, there's a very small piece that's SF2, which would also be rezoned to HDR. As you can see, it's HDR on both sides. And then we are not looking to rezone the parcel on the south on Twentieth Street. That is a surface parking lot, and we are going to keep it a surface parking lot, but revitalize it. Just quickly, I'll go through some of the current uses that you could build on, on the project. You could have a car wash. You could have a cemetery. You could have smoke shops or tobacco store. You could have, you know, resource extraction, nightclubs, helipads, vehicle charging. There's just a lot of things in here that we view that would be inappropriate for this site, whereas what we're proposing, we think, is, is appropriate. Getting into the height, as you can see, there's, there's various comparables here. The one I'd like to point out is Parallel Texas Tech, so they're going at seventy-five, seventy-five feet. Ours will be sixty-five feet. So again, we feel that with all these comps in the area, the height is appropriate. Here's just a map of, of the comps that match up there with the following page, sorry, the preceding page. And then getting into the conceptual design, design plan. So... So the biggest thing that I would point out here is, and I've mentioned it, is how you access this building and the use of the, the surface parking lot. So you will access this building, let's see if this works. I don't know if you can really see, but you'll access the building on Nineteenth Street heading east. You'll come through the building. There'll be a roller gate here and a roller gate here. Once you, if you have a per, a parking permit to park in here, the only way to enter this lot right here will be through, will be coming through the parking garage. That will hit a gate and it will roll up both gates at the same time. So what that does is that avoids anyone going through the alley accessing it. Now, if you're leaving and you're in the surface parking lot, we're going to have signage and cameras. And we're going to find residents if they do go down the alley. So during the orientation process of move-in, we can really educate them on not using that alley. So this is a, a typical floor. The retail component is in the top-left corner. We intend to have some sort of amenity leasing office on the first floor. And then there's two ground-floor courtyards. Right now, we're planning, you know, two pickleball courts and a, and kind of like a hangout zen area. Moving on, this is a typical floor that is not a, a top, a top-floor unit, but you can see the residential units laid out. We do have three elevators planned in the building. And then you get to the top floor. What's interesting about the, the fifth floor is the building does not go on the south side of the building. The building will only go up to the, to four stories. And then there's going to be a setback. This creates a, kind of like a terrace. But we're, we're sensitive to the fact that, that if you don't block it, you'll be looking down into the neighbors' backyards. So our goal is to, our, our intention, and we will, is to build a, a landscaping screen that completely blocks that. It also helps create kind of less of a, a tight feeling in that alley by having the building setback there. And then the only, the other thing I'd like to mention here is the pool. Originally, we had the pool going all the way out to the southern edge of the building. But after meeting with the neighborhood, we understand that, that that's a concern. So we've reduced the size of the, of the pool, also bringing it back. It will be screened, so there will be no sightlines from there into Twentieth Street. And that also allowed us to increase our parking count. This was the previous project that was presented, I think it was a couple of years ago. Again, major variances, we are not proposing, or major differences, we're not proposing to build any structures on Twentieth Street. And then our parking garage is on the other side, which allows for a straight shot into the surface lot instead of having to park on, to go on Twentieth Street to get into that lot. Again, I just went through the, the first major difference between this project and the last one. The other, the other difference is we are not asking for any variance to the UDC, which they, they did. And finally, just very open communication. And we truly have been trying to use that feedback that we've gotten from Tech Terrace to gel this project into what it's going to look like. Quick, couple examples of what the building will look like. So this, the top photo is, is a rendering as if you were standing on Nineteenth Street looking south. And then the bottom one is also as if you were on Nineteenth Street. And it's the, I guess it's the northwest, northeast, northwest portion of the, of the site. But that's where the retail will go. Just what I want to point out here is on the top image, if you can see, can you see my mouse? Yeah. This is what it would look like if a person was standing here and looking out. And you can tell by their sightline, as well as the green wall, that there's no way for them to see into the neighbors' lots behind them. And you can see it here as well. This will be the outdoor amenity little deck on the, on the, on top of the fourth floor. And then the bottom one, again, is just a different angle. But the whole intention here is that you're, you're blocking sightlines. I'm going to call up our architect to go through the design approach. There was an extensive undertaking to make sure that this project fits in line with Tech Terrace and Texas Tech. So I'll pass it over to Joseph.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members and residents and neighbors of Lubbock, Texas. My name is Joseph Amadi, Principal of Resort Design, eighty-five twenty-one Eastburg Pike, Vienna VA. Thank you for having me here. As Tyler just mentioned, designing this project has been a tremendous process. And neighbors within the site have provided very much great feedback throughout the process. So a lot of the information that we are sharing today has been basically the feedback we have received from neighbors, and they have provided a lot of guidance of how we should see this project. Now, Texas Tech is probably one of the five most beautiful campuses in the US. So designing a building that overlooks Texas Tech is, is a very big challenge. At the same time, it is located on Nineteenth Street, which in itself hold, had the gold, the God Bowl Building within, within our site, which doesn't exist today. At the same time, we have these beautiful mansions, which are along the Nineteenth Street. So we had to come up with a design approach and a design process, which takes all that into, into thinking and the process. And we should look at all these buildings together and come up with a design guideline that takes into effect what needs to happen here that can be complementary to the existing culture, to the existing heritage of architecture. Therefore, we looked at various different buildings. Administrative Building of Texas Tech from nineteen twenty-three. God Bowl Building within our site from nineteen twenty. You have the Mansions from nineteen twenty-nine. The Architecture Department Building from nineteen seventy. All these buildings will share a significant proportions within themselves that we need to kind of identify to be able to understand what our building needs to be for future. Looking at those buildings, five different categories come into place. You have proportion and harmony. You have the tri-pipe design, which divides the building into three different sections. You have the covered walkways, which basically blocks the sun and provides a pathway for pedestrians to move around the site. At the same time, we have the arc windows. And at the most, we have materials and basically the color palette and the color tone, which is used throughout the neighborhood. The second slide only calls out the buildings that we just discussed. We looked at these buildings from close-up and tried to identify what these buildings have in common and how we can attract principles from these buildings to use within our design. As you can see, the administrative building was designed in nineteen twenty-three, if I'm not mistaken, the date, or somewhere along those dates. It was designed in a, in a very symmetrical pattern, as you can see on the screen. It has a very good entry point or focal point that gives you a sense of arrival. It is ended with the two tower, the, the two bell towers at the far end, which basically connects the building to the ground. So as you look at the building, you get a feeling that this building is here to stay and is not moving. So that kind of translates into how we should design this building. And you can see on the imagery on the bottom light, right corner, that we have basically taken that principle and assigned it to our building as how we can use that principle. As we move forward, we have the tri-pipe design principle. This design principle is now in today's role, used in basically post-modern architecture. Those of us who are familiar with urban design, we know this is one of the most significant principles within urban design, to divide the building into three different sections. You have the base building, you have the main and the top. The base is where me and you walk, and I see the building all the time. The main building will, will be visible from a level far away. And the top will kind of come into effect when you're looking at it from a distance. Therefore, you need to have more attention on the base, more detail. As you go to the top, those details will kind of come down. And as you go to the top, as you go to the main, to the basically main part, you eliminate those details. And at the top, you go back to those details and try to define it. So your building has a line that defines it to the sky. So as you see the building, you can definitely find the building parameters very clearly. Then moving back, this is the basic of Texas Tech. We are looking at Texas Tech. But at the same time, we are located in the Nineteenth Street. And on Nineteenth Street, the architectures surrounding us are on a smaller scale and a different occupancy type. You have the Mansions Building, which is now existing there. So we need to kind of understand what is the principle within that structure as well and how we can implement that within our design so it be complementary with it, within the whole screen. And as you can see, the model on the middle portion, bottom right, is what we put together, which resembles the building and kind of comes to an effect of we have arcades and we have dormers. And we try to use the same principle in our design on that metal piece, which is our focal piece, which creates that sense of arrival. And then, as I mentioned, nineteen, the building, the Architecture Department within the Texas Tech, it goes back to nineteen seventy, I think. And they did a beautiful job designing this building. It's very simple, but at the same time, it is very complementary to the surrounding environment. The, the two towers we have at this, at the end of the building not only resembles the bell tower from an Esprit de la Building, but also it kind of resembles the architecture of the Architecture Department Building, to be able to connect this building altogether within one facade. And at the, at the most, at the last, we were talking about arcades and basically creating that pedestrian experience within the ground. So when you have the sun outside, you can basically walk around and have the same feeling. And the same design, to some degree, came to our basically concept. Now, these concepts have changed the way they look, and they are more modern to today's architecture. We don't want to copy-paste exactly what we had before. We wanted to kind of use the same principles. And ultimately, the outcome will give you an, an architecture that will be recognized in future. And hopefully, the generation after us will come and defend it as neighbors are doing today for the architecture that exists. And you can see on this slide how the gen, how the process has moved from the top all the way to the bottom and how we have came up with the today's concept of dividing the building into different segments. The building is a linear building, has a scale to it. So we wanted to make sure that scale is divided up into different segments. So as you are walking along the Nineteenth Street or driving, you are experiencing different parts of the building on different views as you are taking pictures. And each view will give you a different experience. But at the same time, the tone and the character will be complementary to today's architecture. But at the same time, it will respect what is there today. And I will turn it to Tyler.
Okay, so I will quickly just go through the site accessibility. As I kind of mentioned, a big part of this is at the, the Nineteenth Street entrance. So you will only enter from Nineteenth Street. No public entry or exit on Twentieth Street. And then I, I do have a photo a little bit later, but the current parking lot, it's pretty unsightly. We're going to revitalize it with fencing and vegetation. The, we talked about the alley access. And then just real quick, I wanted to mention for traffic, there is routes fifty, uh, five and forty-nine, which are two blocks away from the, the project. And then we also intend to really push ride-share and food delivery by having a designated area on the property for that. This is the traffic study map. And really, what we were just trying to show here is the green, I guess it's, it's more of like a turquoise. The outer circle, that's about a ten-minute walk and a five-minute drive. Whereas the, the, or the green circle is a five-minute walk and a two-minute drive. And what we're showing here is you can walk either east or west. And if you walk west, you'll, you'll enter the University at Boston Avenue. If you walk east, you will enter on university. And then also regarding driving, in order to get on university, you will take a right on, on Nineteenth and then head north. However, if you want to go west, you'll have to loop back around. And we're not going to encourage, you can make a U-turn there, but it's not going to be encouraged. I mentioned Route five and, and forty-nine, right by our site. And then here's just some more conceptual views. So this is kind of a bird's-eye view of the building. I think, you know, again, what we're trying to show here is that it really fits in with the design and that we're trying to respect the views and, and keep the pool back. Here's the, the opposite side. What I point out here is this terrace on Level five and then the vegetation in front of it blocking it. But that will be another outdoor area for the residents. This is a perspective on Nineteenth Street. And then another one, but just a different angle. And then one more. And then finally, one more, which is, this is the cafe. And then the, the last one I just want to show is, is Nineteenth Street existing and then Twentieth Street existing. So on the bottom, as you can see, that's the current parking lot. And then in front is essentially the vegetation and the wall that we intend to put up there and just make it look a lot better. We've gone over this a little bit. And Joseph kind of spoke about this. But again, trying to tie in paneling and brick and, and different siding that we see on campus and in the neighborhood is, is the goal here. Focusing on parking. So a couple of things I want to point out here. So our current garage has three hundred and fifteen spaces planned. The UDC requirement for this project is one hundred and eight spaces. And that's based on two hundred and sixteen units at a ratio of half a space per unit. So currently, as provided, we are providing two hundred and seven, surplus of two hundred and seven spaces. And then our ratio to units is three times the current requirement. What we did, and I just want to make sure. So there is a, there's one typo on this slide. But what we did is we, we took a survey of the proper, of other student housing properties in the market. We did it on a unit basis and on a per-bed basis. The one error on here is Carlton House has four hundred and twenty-five spaces, not four hundred. So what that does is it, it, it changes the available parking-to-units ratio to two, to two-point-oh for Carlton House. What that does is it then changes the available parking-to-units ratios to two-point-four compared to our, our one-point-five. We then took it a step further and said, let's actually look at what's being leased so we don't overbuild parking here. And what we found is if you, the, the only, with the change in Carlton House, that number changes to one-point-seven, and the average changes to one-point-two. So if you look at these properties at a parking-to-units ratio, we're providing one-point-five, and these comps are parking at one-point-two. So we're above that. We also did it on a per-bed basis. This did not change the numbers, the, the four hundred and twenty-five, it didn't change the ratios at all. But again, the available parking-to-beds ratio for these comps is point-nine spaces per bed. And we're providing point-five. And the, the leased parking-to-beds ratio is point-five. So we're right online with what's actually being leased. And then finally, this is, it's relevant, however, every market is completely different. But we did look at our portfolio and our parking-to-units ratio. Our average is one-point-four parking spaces per unit. And in this project, we're out, we're, we're going to have one-point-five. So we're above our average. And then quickly, going through our, our overall project features. Very important aspect of all of our projects is, is security. So we do have a, we, we intend to have a professionally managed, it's full-time. And then at night, we have overnight security guards. That's common in this market. We intend to do that. We'll have over two hundred security cameras on-site. Everything is key fob to access. I know that there's concerns about noise at night in the outdoor spaces. The way that we control that is we lock our doors to the outside. You can't get out to those amenities after nine PM during the week, weekdays and nine, and ten PM on the weekends. And we have a camera, so we can find anyone who's, who's out there. And we also have security, so we can, we can be all over that. We also do not allow the consumption of any alcoholic beverages in public areas in our, in our facilities. So there will not be any drinking allowed on, on the deck. And the goal is there to kind of not make it a big party deck. It's, it's not going to be that. Focusing on trash, all dumpsters serving the project will be internal. We do have trash chutes and recycling chutes on each residential floor. And then it'll be handled by a private provider. Pool design, as I've said a couple of times, really small zen feel, not trying to have views into Twentieth Street. And then we can, we can handle the hours. These are just some photos of the last project we did in Richmond to get a feel for the quality of, of the building. And the last piece is benefits for Lubbock. So for Tech Terrace, we truly feel that we've been a committed developer who's opening to work with the neighborhood. If we are successful today, that is not the end of our communication with the neighborhood. This is just the beginning. We intend to work with them throughout the entire process and then be a good neighbor when we're in there, in the neighborhood as, as a, as a member of the neighborhood. when we're in their, in the neighborhood as, as a, as a member of the neighborhood. For Tech, for Tech, for Texas Tech, the addition of Class A student housing walkable to campus is great for the university. We do this all over the country and we're seeing that a lot of universities have a lot of, are, are starting to get really nice new student housing and it seems like some of that has fallen behind. So again, it's, it's a great benefit for students, especially if our program is fully focused on how we can keep them in school. And then fire and sewer upgrades, so all utilities, or all upgrades will be our cost. We're not looking for any, any help with that. And then we intend for widening and repaving resulting in a better improved alley between 19th and 20th Street. So finally, the result is a building that blends tradition and innovation, honoring its surrounding culture and heritage. And that is the end of our presentation. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Pearl Mutter. Or is there anyone else here to speak in favor of this project today? If you are, please come forward now.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thanks for allowing me to come up here. My name's George Hardburger. I live at 1602 Texas Avenue and I'm, I'm part of a company that owns this property. I just wanted to say one or two quick things. I want to reiterate what Corey had to say about this developer. He's a collaborative guy. He's really worked hard to try to make this fit the best he can in this neighborhood. I think you will hear a concern about traffic. And my, I want to tell you what the current situation is there. The 20th Street parking lot is currently used by students from all over town as, as a commuter lot. They drive in from various places and park there. You can go there almost any time of day and there'll be 30, 40, 50 cars out there. We've run a count in the past and over 100, well over 100 cars a day currently come in and out of that parking lot. That is going away. That, that won't be an issue. I think you might hear that there's a concern that if somebody wants to go west on 19th Street, they'll swing around and go south on University, then west on 20th and up to Boston, so they can go west on 19th Street. That'll probably happen some, but these kids do not leave, go and come at the same time every day. And I mean, that'll happen, but it's, you, you got to remember that the traffic that's going in and out of there now is pretty heavy. So I hope you'll approve this project, approve this application for zoning and I thank you for your time.
Anyone else here today to speak in favor?
Hello, Mr. Mayor and Council. Forgive the nervousness. I have been connected to this project partially for a couple of years, so have a little bit of a unique take on some of the things.
Please, please give us your name.
Oh, sorry. Eric Lampert, 3802 133rd. So I just want to point out that this group has been incredibly collaborative. The project has come a long way. When the first, project first was proposed, it started with, I believe, three-story large apartment full complex on 20th. After some pushback, a previous developer brought it down to two-story townhomes, I believe, which exist in a lot of nice neighborhoods in Lubbock like Vinitch Township and others. And then the newest developer eliminated all building on 20th Street and cut out traffic. So in my mind, I think they have been very collaborative and have listened very well to residents. I don't believe we can make everything perfect in their minds, but there's been a couple of other projects in the area that I think they've been even more collaborative. I know there was a recent project in North Overton that was passed. We also passed a, a project on the north side of Tech Stadium with houses directly adjacent to it. But I haven't seen this kind of collaboration in Texas Tech architecture and all these different things, and so I applaud Tyler and his team. I also just want to point out, you'll hear things like, no student, not one, will come to Texas Tech without a car. I was one of them. And by the way, it was 22 years ago now, wait, no, no, sorry, 17 years ago now, and that building and that lot was completely vacant and it still sits there. So I've dreamed and hoped that there would be something that would be more of an asset for Texas Tech. That area of Lubbock might spur some more growth on 19th and University. It'll help the school tax base. There's a lot of good, you know, positives to the project and I think that the team has worked really hard in making it better and I think that some of y'all and some of the zoning board and everybody that's come before us has done the same. And that's what it takes to do better things for our cities. A lot of these people who might even still oppose it have made it better. And so hopefully we can figure out a way to push it forward and gain an asset in our city. Thanks for your time.
Wanted to bring up a couple of things that I forgot to mention earlier, some questions that we, that we've had to address in the past. I'm going to go back to another slide real quick and just answer a few of these. It's a long slideshow. One of the questions, oh, that's the wrong slide. One of the questions was, how do we access garbage collection for the site? As was mentioned, this is the only entrance to the site for public. This will be the entrance also for garbage collection. There will be a compactor here in the parking garage, so, so the, the tracks, trash collection will not be serviced by city facilities in the alley. It will be serviced here internally. One of the arguments that were made by neighbors previously was that students are going to find a way to get into this parking lot somewhere or another. One thing I want you to keep in mind is this driveway, there's several driveways now. We're going to demo those driveways and build a fence around this entire property here. This will be a controlled gate with a Knox box for fire department access only. That's the only reason for that driveway. We have to have another exit point for fire department purposes only. This is a typical thing for apartment complexes. We often have a secondary access point for trucks for that necessary, for the, for that need. Only the fire department has the access to that, to that lock. People mentioned, well, kids are going to find a way and break into it, that, you know, we're going to have security cameras for that, going to prevent that in every way possible. That's, that's not something that we plan to be the norm. Another thing that was brought up was cost to the city for infrastructure upgrades that may be necessary. There may be needs for a, a larger sewer line to serve the site. These things are already being budgeted for and planned for by the developer at the developer's expense. I've already asked for pricing to lower the utilities, upgrade the water in the sewer on things that we are assuming will be needed in the design phase. Those things will be borne by the developer. Another thing that was mentioned was traffic stopping, trying to queue into this driveway. One thing that you'll notice is at Boston, it's kind of a choke point there. It, it narrows up and then as soon as you get through the intersection, it widens out with the right turn only lane. And so that lane will be free and, and used for queuing if need be, if there is a, if there is a, a need for that coming in. There is an access gate inside of here that allows only for a key fob by the, by the homeowners that have, have that, paid for that parking service. There is a way to turn around if you get in and you're confused, you can still turn around and, and leave the facility. There will be adequate parking based off of code for the other uses here, for leasing, for guestings of that nature. One thing that I can tell you, the conversations that I had with Tyler and the contractor, they're still looking at ways to increase the parking. This is a very expensive building and they don't want to make any expensive mistakes. I can assure you that there are many neighbors in this, in this area that are not going to be happy with any project that is viable. And, and I think that's important for us to understand, the location and the value of this area. It's going to take a viable, bankable project for something to be built and we feel like we have one. It's adjacent to a, a, a large hotel with the exact zoning that we're requesting. It's also adjacent to another apartment with the exact zoning we're requesting. This apartment and this apartment, or in this, in the two facilities to the west have access and parking in the alley. That is not something that we're proposing for this site. So these are just a few of the things that came up in previous discussions that I failed to mention earlier. Be happy to answer any questions.
All right, anyone else present to speak in favor? All right, before we move on to the opposition, we're going to take a brief 10-minute break and then we'll come back. Thank you very much. All right, everyone will take their seat again. All right, I'll call us back from our recess, momentary recess, and we're back on the record. And now I will call forward anyone wishing to speak in opposition to item 6.7. Please come forward. Again, please state your name and address.
Mayor, council members, I'm Tom Pitts. I'm an attorney here at Lubbock. I live at 40, sorry, 44 11 49th Street. I am representing a resident of the neighborhood who is adversely affected by this project. I will give great credit to the developers. It was a great show, lots of stuff, but the real politique is simple. There is one way in and one way out. 315 parking spaces, 580 something beds, and they are going to be moving. It's kind of like getting in line at Starbucks at eight o'clock in the morning. There's going to be plenty of cars, plenty of traffic. Now, the problem is, and this was discussed at the last time, the access is easy. Coming down 19th Street from west to east, you drive straight in. Once you decide to leave, the dilemma starts. You can go east on 19th to University and make a U-turn, or you can turn right and go down to 20th or 21st or 22nd and access Boston. I was pleased to hear that they will close off or not allow people to come down the driveway, I mean, the alleyway. The alley is crooked, it's got lots of dumpsters and at two o'clock in the morning, an F-250 Ford with a brush cutter is going to have a hard time getting past the dumpsters safely. Now, if, if we look at this in terms of the other ways of access, if a student is coming south on University, if they turn onto 19th Street, they've got to make a U-turn at Boston to get back and probably in their mind, one of the easiest ways to get to it. Otherwise, they have to go down to 20th, which, and cut across to Boston, make the complete circle to come back. None of those are easy or simple and I don't think that this was, you know, the idea of trying to make it a, a contest for students to drive to this. It is going to be a difficult situation. Now, with regard to some of the other aspects, which were really well-prested, I don't know that the restriction on alcohol will work very well with our students. I lived in Tech Terrace for two decades. I know the population and I know how things really exist. So I think it's, it's a well-thought-out design plan in the wrong location and I would ask the council to deny this application.
Good afternoon, council, Mr. Mayor. I'm Cindy Prattis. I live at 31 18 20th Street and I jumped right up here selfishly because I thought you would still be fresh. So thank you for taking out time in your day to listen to us and the best four words is, I'll keep it brief. I promise. My purpose this afternoon is simply to clarify how we arrived at our current situation regarding the Unified Development Code, or UDC, as it's better known. The real key to understanding this issue lies in recognizing the challenges that arise with the natural transitions in council membership and staff. It's become clear that we need to find ways to better safeguard institutional knowledge and ensure long-term continuity. This is at the heart of the problem with the UDC. We're dealing with long-term documents like Plan Lubbock 2040, which was passed in 2018. None of the council members who approved it are still serving. And critically, the key council members who were deeply involved in the UDC committee were no longer here when staff was directed to finalize it and get it passed. By that point, four of our seven council members were new. To further illustrate my point, it's worth noting that three of our longest-serving council members are getting ready to celebrate their three-year anniversary in May. This disconnect is crucial to understand. I believe Plan Lubbock 2040 was designed to be the cornerstone of the Unified Development Code. It's a really pretty good-looking plan. Y'all probably already have it in your offices. It was a costly plan. It was headed up by Johns Waker and a significant number of volunteer citizens who now feel it's not been adhered to. I began attending UDC meetings in August of 2021 up until October of 2024. I was committed, or maybe should have been committed. I attended over 15 meetings, engaged in numerous communications via email, telephone with council staff and concerned citizens. In fact, at my very first open house for the UDC, I sat with Dan Pope and Jeff Griffith, who expressed their own concerns about the plan and the process. As the UDC's contracted deadline neared, the process accelerated. We made multiple attempts to amend the High Density Residential, or HDR, as it's better known, in order to protect neighborhoods, which is what Plan Lubbock 2040 dictated, protect our neighborhoods. For example, a small chiropractic practice at the corner of 26th and Boston is on a lot that is less than a quarter acre. It's now zoned HDR. That's a clear misapplication. Similarly, 19th Street from University to Boston was broadly zoned HDR, including a small apartment building, a hotel, and a bed and breakfast, none of which fit HDR. It seems in the rush to finalize the UDC, errors were made by lumping odd zoning designations from the old plan into the general bucket of HDR. That to me puts the compatibility aspect of this into question. Despite our efforts, no citizen amendments were passed. Only developer amendments were adopted. We were assured these changes would not impact us. Finally, in October of 2024, the UDC with developer amendments was adopted five to zero, with three of those votes coming from brand-new council members. Now we're facing the very impacts we were told wouldn't happen. Mogo here was just to provide a concise overview of how we reached this point. Your vote is for a zone change. It's not for a specific project, simply a zone change. As it stands, HDR will impact us. Thank you for your time.
Good afternoon, council members, Mr. Mayor. Why, it seems like only a couple of years ago that, that we were having a similar discussion. Maybe if I could just start, oh, and I should start with my name and, and address, forgive me. Richard Murphy, 29 11 20th Street. There is, appearances notwithstanding, a lot of common ground here. I, I think everybody knows that the 19th Street properties need redevelopment. I think everybody knows that the 19th Street properties need redevelopment. And I for one, I may be speaking out of turn, I can't speak for the community on this, but I take as given it's going to be in the nature of student housing, given the location. I understand that developers have an understandable interest in maximizing the number of beds. That's their business model, and that's fine. The community has an understandable interest in reducing the number of beds because every problem connected with this project, especially parking and traffic, gets better as the project gets smaller. And I'm sure that everyone is kind of tired of this process dragging out and would like to see something happen in the property. Now, it's been suggested that there are some in the community, I may resemble this remark, who just can't be pleased. You know, that, you know, there was an old developer came by, they had their project, they got shot down, now there's a wonderful new developer who makes a wonderful presentation, and they seem great. Why can't you say yes? Well, let's pause for a moment and compare the project that was rejected by this council for being too big a couple of years ago with the current one. Up Campus' project had 600 beds, 514 parking spaces, and was 60 feet tall. It did include 35 beds in townhouses on 20th Street, but overwhelmingly, you know, the dog was the 19th Street building, the tail was on 20th Street. Pinecrest's concept proposal, its non-binding concept proposal, presented to P&amp;Z, has 584 beds and 315 parking spaces and is 65 feet tall. It is far from plain whether or not this is an improvement for the neighborhood in terms of the kinds of pressures that will be placed upon it. One other comparison I'd like to make. I was curious, I haven't done as much research as the developers, but I called the Carlton House and I had a conversation with the manager. This was just a conversation, I was not looking at official documents, but these numbers are broadly consistent with what I believe were presented by Pinecrest. Carlton House has 440 beds, 420 parking spaces, that's a 95% ratio. The manager told me that it's typically about 85% full on parking, that would be 80% of beds. What would that get you over in Pinecrest with its 584 beds, about 465 parking spaces? So where are the cars going to, where are they going to go? Points I'd like to cover, and I'll try to be quick about it. One, a reason to reject the HDR zoning change. Thrust of it is that the city should at least fix the glaring anomaly relating to parking in the HDR zone before shifting more properties to the HDR zone. Also, since there's been so much conversation about the project, I'd like to point out a couple of ways in which, near as I can tell, and I speak under correction, I'm just hanging out at home, reading the UDC, doing my best, ways in which the project actually is inconsistent with UDC requirements and will need some significant changes. And lastly, because it's sometimes suggested that people in the community are not coming up with solutions, I at least want to flag a possibility for going forward. Now, the key thing about HDR, as I'm sure all of you know, is that a builder can choose either to build an apartment or vertical mixed use. And it's a big deal to shift to vertical mixed use. Among other things, the apartment is limited to 45 feet. Now, that's actually kind of an illusion because you can build higher with some modest additional setbacks. You can build a five-story building as an apartment, but you've got 75 feet in vertical mixed use. A critical difference is that apartments have 50% maximum lock coverage, whereas there is no such limit for vertical mixed use other than whatever the setbacks may require for the particular lot. Of most importance for the present discussion, however, is the difference in parking. Now, the developer has explained truthfully that they're providing lots more, hundreds more spaces than are actually required by the UDC. That's absolutely true, and it's a problem with the UDC. Under the apartment designation, and this is consistent with other types of dwellings listed in the table, like fraternities, sororities, et cetera, the number of parking spaces is determined by the number of bedrooms. Whereas under vertical mixed use, it's just .5 per dwelling unit of any size. That dwelling unit could be an efficiency, it could be a five-bedroom. How does this cash out? Suppose that you had a 600-bed unit composed of 200 three-bedroom dwelling units, just for the sake of conversation. Under the apartment designation, you need 400 parking spaces. Under vertical mixed use, you need 100. With regard to Pinecrest's non-binding concept plan, under the apartment designation, near as I can tell, you need 354 parking spaces, whereas, as the developer mentioned, you only need 108 for vertical mixed use. It'd be one thing if Loic had chosen extensive parking requirements for every type of dwelling, or very few, you know, there's an argument to be made, there should be no parking requirements. That's particularly apt in a place like San Francisco or Chicago. But here in West Texas, with lots and lots of big pickup trucks, that seems very hard to defend. And more to the point, the anomaly that, the difference between vertical mixed use and apartment in terms of parking, it's absolutely impossible to make sense of it. And I respectfully submit that you should fix this before shifting zones to HDR. Because at the end of the day, as I believe Cindy pointed out, you're not approving the project. The project is just a, it's only a concept plan at this point, right? And the developer eventually may sell, et cetera. You're not approving the project, you're approving the zone change. And by making this zone change, you are saying that someone can put a 75-foot-tall building on that lot with no limit on lock coverage with absurdly minimal parking requirements. That's what the shift to HDR does at this time, and I respectfully submit that it needs fixing. A couple of points about the project itself, because there's been so much discussion about the project, although the project is not up for approval. The concept plan actually does not satisfy UDC requirements. Now, I'm sure that there will be differences of opinion on how to read the UDC. Just doing my best here. They are making use of vertical mixed use. All right, so near as I can tell from the P&amp;Z presentation, there's about 375,000 square feet composed of apartments, parking, and amenities, all things that are consistent with residential use, and there's 2,700 square feet of retail. That is less than 1% of the square footage. Now, there are some UDC provisions that may be pertinent. There's a UDC provision providing that the mixed-use districts permit both residential and non-residential principal uses in the same structure. And the UDC defines principal use as the main activity or combination of activities on a lot or in a structure. Now, some sorts of legal arguments can only be decided by authority, you know? One side has its argument, the other side has the other argument. I think I'd like to be the person saying that less than 1% does not constitute a principal or main use of a structure. So it's not a legitimate invocation of the vertical mixed use. What's more, even if it were, let's suppose the developer changes plans. All right, well, we'll put a bunch of retail on the first floor. So it looks like what you actually expect vertical mixed use to look like, you know, driving around any city. You'll see a ton of it. All right, fine, that would be vertical mixed use then. We've still got a problem. In the UDC, in the section 3902005, everybody's favorite, I suppose, and, oh wait, yes, it did show up right, good. Base mixed-use districts. This section sets forth standards for the mixed-use districts, et cetera, down to applicability. The standards in this subsection apply to all mixed-use districts, all mixed-use districts. And I'm here to tell you that those standards, those general standards, they would make a libertarian's mind explode. They are extraordinarily intrusive and restrictive. Architectural standards, lighting standards, parking standards, et cetera. Now, there, let me be forthright here. There is, I'm sure, a difference of opinion based upon informal conversations with city staff from quite a while ago, as well as just observing how these events are unfolding. The counterargument, just to be forthright, is that none of this applies. None of these standards apply to vertical mixed use because vertical mixed use is a base residential district rather than a base mixed-use district? That's the argument. Well, to which I respond, that business about applicability, it doesn't say the standards in this subsection apply to all base mixed-use districts. It doesn't even say the mixed-use districts, it says all mixed-use districts. And where there doubt on the subject, if you comb through the HDR provisions themselves, you will find that the HDR language characterizes HDR itself as a kind of mixed-use district from the purpose provision of HDR. Mixed use, mid-to-high-rise apartment development in a mixed-use district. So there are just a host of standards that would need to apply. Now, again, you know, arguments, counterarguments, it's a sort of thing only authority can ultimately decide. But personally, I'd rather make the argument that all means all. A third point. Now, the developer has said that they don't need any variance. Well, here's another problem. The concept plan needs 30 more feet of rear setback. Now, under HDR, the rear setback provisions depend upon whether or not you are adjacent to a residential or non-residential use. In the case of residential use, it needs to be 50 feet. Now, I suspect, I don't know, but I suspect that the developer believes, or has been advised, that they're actually adjacent to a 15-foot alley rather than to the residential buildings that are directly behind the property. But if we look at the definitions, I don't know that for fact, I'm speculating. But if we look at the definitions from the UDC, well, maybe we can just make do with the one for adjacent. Adjacent means next to, but shall not necessarily mean touching. Also refer to the definition for a budding. A budding means touching. Whereas adjacent does not necessarily mean touching, you can be nearby. And I was just curious, so I looked up some dictionary definitions, and in the very first definitions of adjacent, Merriam-Webster and Oxford English, very near something else, nearby. If you were looking for a reason why adjacent is broader than a budding, I don't think you could find a better example than our situation right now. So most of the 19th Street property is across an alley from single-family residential. That alley is 15 feet wide. The obvious purpose behind the rear setback requirement is to make sure that a hulking vertical-mixed-use building, 65 feet tall, is at least 50 feet away from residential properties. That's why the word adjacent is used rather than a budding. So across, well, at least the portion that is directly behind the residential properties, they need another 30 feet of setback. Actually, I'd argue, you probably need to go into the green and the HDR and the parking lot because even at that corner, you're still within the meaning of adjacent. So they will need a variance. And we can build more apartments, and that will maximize our profits. Is not a legal basis for variance, otherwise there'd be no such thing as zoning law. Oh, one thing to bear in mind on this point as well, there were efforts to address this type of problem in the amendment process, community proposals to amend the HDR zone. It turns out that you can't build a vertical-mixed-use building like this on the same blockface as single-family residential. You can't build it across the street from single-family residential. You can build it across an alley. And we suggested amendments to address this. And we were told, city responded, "Don't worry about it, the setback requirements will take care of it." So, and that seemed worth flagging. Now, lastly, and I know I've used up far too much of your time, so, very quickly, it's been suggested that we never have solutions. I just wanted to suggest something, I hope it's not naive, certainly I'm not the developer here, but a possibility for exploration. What if we stopped pretending that these apartment proposals weren't apartments? What are the possibilities for making some sort of student housing under the apartment designation of HDR? Well, you'd need to deal with some issues here. There is a density limit for apartments, but those can be waived via special use permit, UDC says so. Apartments can go no higher than 45 feet. Oh, yes, they can, with a little additional setback on the side and rear. You can still build your five-story building. The real constraint, I think, I speak under correction, is that there's a 50% coverage limit under apartment. Now, under the current proposal, the current, developer's current proposal wants to use approximately 85% of the surface space of the 19th Street lots. Now, it's too big because of the variance problem, or the setback problem I just identified for you. 50%, do a little math. The apartment designation allows them to build a footprint approximately 60% as big as their current proposal, which is illegally large. Just a little math, 60% of 584 beds is about 350 beds, which I believe is the size, it's the size of one of their projects. It's not so much smaller than the Carlton House, and it's the size of, I forget, was it in Tennessee? One of their projects was a 350-bed project. Now, it's been said, we need something viable for the property. Well, if 350 beds, or who knows, maybe there's some discretion somewhere in the code that could lift it a bit more. You know, if it could, if it could work someplace else, perhaps it could work here. Thank you very much for your time and consideration and your patience.
I apologize because I forgot to raise my foot one day, and I, but anyway. My name's Lauren Prather. I live at 3108 20th Street. My wife and I lived in the Prather House that was built in 1950. So we have been in and around this neighborhood a while. And I'm a disciple of Roscoe Wilson, as she is, and J.T. Hutchinson. So we kind of know what's going on in the community. And I want to bring up a couple of three items, and I will try not to be repetitive. But one of the things that concerns us is, of course, density, that's a lot of people. The other one that concerns us is traffic. Because, how do I put it this way? In respect of the gentleman that testified, we've got two in college and two going to college in June. They all four have a car. I know where they're going in those cars, wherever they want to go to school. But what's going to happen is they're going, and oh, I'm so proud that they cut, made the parking lot go, made the parking lot go north, because that helps. But with the traffic count, they're going to come out, and they're going to go to university, and they're going to take 20th, 21st, or 22nd, either to Boston, Flint, or Indiana, because they're going to want to go west. And hopefully, they're not going to do a U-turn at university, because that would really be dangerous. But there will be more traffic moving down those roads than normal because they got to get there somehow. And then the other thing that, that's going to be an issue, I think is going to be an issue, is the fact that because there's no parking on 19th and because the proposal is not going to have enough spaces, we're going to get them on 20th, 21st, and 22nd. It's going to happen, already has somewhat. But I need to bring this to your attention, and I'm sure city managers are aware of this too. Up until September, we used to get the parking department, or guru, two times a day. He would come down 20th, 21st, 22nd, 23rd, 24th, and 25th because we have so much dedicated parking permit, two hours, everything. And he would run that route twice a day. October 1st, it stopped. And we checked on that with some people that were parking in front of us, and we were told that we have to file a complaint with the department and then identify to them who, what's there, and then they'll come take a look. And that's, that's an issue because those three or four streets I'm talking about have permit parking, two-hour, or eight-to-five parking, two-hour parking. I mean, that's how most everybody's trying to control it in front of their house. And then the other thing that y'all are probably aware of is they took the thoroughfare street off of 22nd, and that's why we've got parking on both sides of the street. And I would respectfully request at some point, just get in your car about 10:00 in the morning and 2:00 in the afternoon, and make a run from Boston to university on 22nd, and you're going to see where all those cars are and where they're coming from. I'm not against the intent of what they're trying to do. I do think it is not a good location to have it. And I would hate to have my house across the street and have... And I would hate to have my house across the street and have however many neighbors within two hundred feet of where I live. So, anyway, we appreciate what y'all do and your time, and this is going to be a tough consideration for y'all, but we really would appreciate if y'all would turn this down.
Mayor, council member, thank you for your time. My name is Orsbit Flöckiger. I live on twenty-seven oh five Twenty-first Street. I lived there with my family for twenty years, loved Texas Tech and Tech Terrace. In my profession, I'm also an architect, and some of you may know some of my work helped to redesign and redevelop our Lubbock's art district. I wanted to speak briefly to the architecture, but also as a neighborhood person from the neighborhood. The tallest building currently in the Tech Terrace neighborhood is Staybridge, which has three stories. We heard the presentation from Pinecrest actually using iconography from Texas Tech We are a residential neighborhood with prominent mansions, some of them historically dignified on Nineteenth Street. The comparisons made earlier by Pinecrest were with different high-rises when they looked at the lower mid-rises. This is not happening at Tech Terrace. Five stories, in any case, would be way too tall to preserve the culture, the history and tradition of Texas Tech Terrace. Some of the buildings actually made reference through by William Ward Watkins, who designed the administrative building at Texas Tech, which two years ago exactly was a hundred years old. Is one of the most distinguished buildings, literally, in the entire city of Lubbock. But it is not residential. It is an administrative, educational building, and does not house a twenty-four-seven building From the very first project was presented more than two years ago, we had moved down about twenty beds. This is not even close for a neighborhood who has residential to absorb that. As an architect, as a planner, I have to ask you all to reject that proposal.
Good afternoon, members of the council. My name's Alastair Hamilton. I live at the intersection of Twenty-Fifth and Detroit. Thank you for the time, you're, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. And I'd also like to thank Mr. Palmer, and we welcome his efforts to communicate with our, and appreciate his efforts to communicate with our neighborhood, and hope that that continues. Nonetheless, I do think that there are some issues with this proposal that it would be appropriate for the council to address before approving, and they are related to the density of the project. I don't believe it is understood quite how dense the developer is planning to build on this lot. The developer is planning to put five hundred and eighty-four beds there, two hundred and twenty-one apartment units. I think that that might have changed to two sixteen, Tyler, Mr. Palmer mentioned today. On a two-point-five-acre lot, so that is two hundred and thirty-four beds per acre, or eighty-eight apartment units per acre. As you heard from Professor Murphy earlier, if they were to build this under the apartment complex designation in our UDC, this would limit them to a density of forty-eight apartment units per acre, and that would limit the building to a hundred and twenty-eight apartment units or three hundred and seventeen beds. Or, in other words, it'd be roughly half the size of what it is at the moment. So, and why, why does this not apply? As again, mentioned by Professor Murphy, it's because they intend to make use of the vertical mixed-use standard by including some small amount of retail space, which amounts to less than one percent of the total floor space of the building. So how dense is this proposal? I think it would be useful to compare it to some of the properties that you may be familiar with. If you compare it to the village at Overton Park, using the zoning information from the city, from the city of Lubbock, the village at Overton Park has a hundred and sixteen apartment units, over four-point-two-five acres, that's twenty-seven apartment units per acre. The developer is planning to build at three times the density of the village at Overton Park. If you compare it to Center Suites at Overton, again, using the information from the city of Lubbock, that's at fifty-one apartment units per acre. That's a seven, Pinecrest is proposing a seventy-two percent increase in density over the Center Suites. If you compare it to Twenty-five Twenty, again, using information from the city, the developer is planning to build at a density eighty-seven percent denser than the Twenty-five Twenty apartment complex. And the gentleman from the developer mentioned viability of the apartment complexes. Clearly, all of these proposals, clearly all of these developments were viable at the time that they were built. And compare it to Carlton House, which was built very recently. If you compare it in terms of the number of beds per acre, Carlton House is a hundred and seventy-four beds per acre. That's, the developer is proposing to build a thirty-four percent increase in density over that. And compare it to the Ulofs apartments. In terms of the number of beds per acre, that is at least forty-three percent denser. And how do we know that? It's because the Ulofs apartments only consist of one- and two-bedroom apartments. Okay? In fact, you can even compare it to Park Tower. If you compare it to Park Tower, that consists of one- and two-bedroom apartments. The proposal is even denser than Park Tower. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, Park Tower is a fifteen-story building. In case I haven't made my point clear, the developer is just trying to put too many people into this building. So what are some of the issues that arise from density, trying to put so many people into a building? If you travel up University Avenue, you will see these crosswalks crossing University Avenue. They're called hawk crossings or high-intensity activated crosswalks. They're controlled by a pedestrian. A pedestrian comes up, pushes this, is allowed to cross over the road, and the, it's a very sort of short period, so it's supposed to try and, well, we all know why they're there, to try and prevent the residents from these high-density neighborhoods from crossing crossings that, or just in the middle of the road. Now, if we look at Nineteenth and University, Nineteenth and University is a nine-lane highway. We have learned that this is, in fact, the widest thoroughfare in the whole of Lubbock. I think that you really have to consider the problems that are going to arise by putting such a dense complex into that point, which is the widest thoroughfare in Lubbock. How are these people going to get across the road if they don't go to the crossings? I think that is a problem that the council really should consider. It's not the only problem, of course. Having so many people in this apartment complex is going to force the residents to enter the complex by making U-turns at Boston. I have in the past explained how the Boston intersection is not really well-designed to accommodate all of those U-turns. Now, again, we've been told that the request today is to approve a zoning change. What is it that the council would actually be authorizing if they approved the zoning change request today? How dense could Pinecrest build an apartment on the site? Well, if we look at our code, we see that, in fact, the vertical mixed-use entry has been left blank. That means that the developer would be able to build at an unlimited density on-site. There's nothing that would prevent them from trying to put seven hundred, eight hundred students in the building. I really think that some sensible limits on density would be appropriate before the council decides to try and authorize a project such as this. Thank you very much, and if you haven't have any questions for me, please feel free to call me.
I'm Sally Conroy. I live at twenty-eight, Twenty-six, Twenty-second Street. My husband and I have lived at this house. This March would be thirty-six years. And my husband and I are both graduates of Texas Tech. We have four children. They're all graduates of Texas Tech. And even one of our children taught in the math department at Texas Tech. And that child is Nathan. When our youngest son, Nathan, was attending Texas Tech, he had an incident crossing Boston and Nineteenth. It happened on November two thousand and thirteen. Our son was leaving campus on Boston and Nineteenth. His bike had a flat tire, so he's walking across the crosswalk legally with electric, electronic pedestrian signage. He was hit by a car, flipping him over the car, and totaling his bike. Having a head injury, he had blood running from his face. Other students came to his aid, and they called the ambulance and police. The ambulance came and took him to Covenant Hospital. After x-rays and such, he was released. He had experienced head trauma, but was going to be okay. It could have been a different story. Nathan said that cars turning left on the campus onto Nineteenth were so aggressive, and often aggressive, I mean, they seemed to dare students on the crosswalk to get out of their way. Nathan never saw this car coming. He's walking his bike, so he was a bigger object for drivers to see. As you know, this zoning change for this building project to hold a high-density student housing will be located on Nineteenth, between two intersections, Boston and University Avenue. In front of the proposed student housing on Nineteenth Street, there are ten lanes. This is in front of the proposed student housing. It has ten lanes with a thin median in the middle. If a student crosses Nineteenth from the proposed housing center, the student would choose between University Avenue intersection or Boston intersection if he wants to cross legally. If a student chooses University and Nineteenth to go on campus, they would have to cross five lanes, with traffic going straight, two turning, left-turning lanes that turn to northbound University Avenue, two right-turning lanes, one on each corner. That means a student has to pass nine lanes to get to the other side. On top of that, this intersection is very busy and dangerous intersection with a high accident rate. If the student chooses Boston to go on campus, they'd have to cross five straight lanes, one left-turning lane, one right-turning lane. That is a total of seven lanes the student would have to cross. And it was mentioned somebody doing U-turns there, and then you had that. So after my son's experience of being hit by a car, he didn't feel safe crossing Boston, so went further west on Nineteenth and crossed at Nineteenth at a non-intersection. In other words, he jaywalked. I didn't find that out till later, but anyway, he said he felt safer crossing that way. Can you imagine even a portion of students of this five hundred and eighty-four-bed student housing doing the same? Boston intersection would have a lot more traffic when my son, oh, would have less traffic when my son Nathan attended Tech. I believe the Texas Tech enrollment at that time was twenty-eight thousand to thirty thousand in two thousand and thirteen. I'm not sure what it is, but when, last time I looked, and if it was correct, it's over forty-one thousand. You would not only have students coming from Tech Terrace rental homes, you would add more population from this high-density apartment complex to that intersection on Boston. There are buses picking up students at the apartment complex because of the median that's in front of them. The buses would have to go east towards University Avenue and then travel north down University Avenue to turn onto the Tech campus, meaning it will not be convenient, time-wise, maybe, getting students to class on time. It would depend on the student's destination, time management, and all that. Some students are not going to take the bus or want to take the bus. In fact, when I went to Tech, I didn't take the bus one time, not that that means anything, but I didn't. Some students are going to bring bikes, skateboards, and scooters when they come to Tech. Scooters are super fast and zipper-cross crosswalks, making it harder for vehicles to see. By the developer's own words, he believes a good portion of the students will not bring cars when they move here to Lubbock. I think he's underestimating his number of parking spaces when he's providing, he's providing at this complex, making it more parking dilemma in our neighborhood. But if it is accurate, that means there'd be more likely that these students will bring bikes, scooters, and skateboards. This location of the building on Nineteenth, loaded, located between university and Boston, which considered here today, is unlike housing for students crossing the campus on University Avenue. University Avenue has fewer lanes to cross, a speed limit is lower, and there are several pedestrian-lit crosswalks where cars have to stop. You cannot provide that for a seven-to-ten-lane crossing on Nineteenth. Which Nineteenth is a true Texas highway. I hear that may not be labeled as a Texas highway in the future, but it doesn't change the fact that the number of lanes a student must cross. My son was struck in broad daylight. What happens when a student crosses at night? There are at least three on the city board here today. I know, you know this is a dangerous and high-population student housing. I would think a developer would know that, too. I beg everyone to see for yourself what I'm saying here today by taking a closer examination of this site. I could have lost my son back in November of two thousand and thirteen because of aggressive driver or distracted driver. I believe with all my heart that if this high-density student housing is okay, and no safe way to cross Nineteenth, there will be more students who'll be hurt or worse. Life can change in a moment. To me and to many others, this is an obvious and serious problem. And, and I hope that you say no to this. This is my son. It has the time and, or it has the date at the top confirming what I'm saying today. I brought these if y'all want a copy. But, anyway. We're smiling because we know if everything's okay. So, anyway. There was something, I don't know if it'd be brought up in the other, other people that are going to be talking, but there's supposed to be guest parking. And I remember last, the last meeting that we were at, they had very few guest parking. And there's a cafe that's going to be there at the shop. So, I mean, it was ridiculously a little. I think it's like, I want to say ten. I mean, it was, it's just not realistic. I don't know, that may be wrong, but that's what I understood. So, anyway, something to consider also. And also, if, if someone builds in something, and then they, they own this building, and they say, "We'll do this. We'll have our own henhouse garbage. We'll, we'll monitor that alleyway." What if they decide they don't want to anymore? What if they do, they sell it? I mean, is it, is it going to have those same promises? Anyway, something else to consider. Please say no.
Mayor McPrayer, council. My name's Ivan Maronho. I live at twenty-nine eighteen Winfield Avenue. I'm currently a third-year law student, and just a little bit on me, I'm from Austin originally, but my grandparents had a house, and they still have a house, on Twenty-sixth and Avenue V. So I'm pretty, pretty familiar with the Tech Terrace area. I was there all the time growing up. My, you know, my cousins and I would go across the street, just, you know, walk across the park. Only, only like, what, four minutes' drive from Tech Terrace? Yeah, it was a good time. But I cannot imagine what it would be like growing up there at that time with a big student dorm right across the street, and cars from a big student dorm right across the street whizzing by at all hours of the day, when my cousins and I are just trying to, you know, walk to the park. So let's talk about traffic use, because at the end of the day, what we're talking about today is a zoning issue. And we're talking about if this should go from low-density residential to high-density residential. Just a couple brief things we've talked about before. I think parking is obviously a major concern. I think parking is obviously a ma, a major concern. Three hundred and fifteen, three hundred and fifteen spots, that's a, that's a, that's a lot. Three hundred and fifteen new spots, I guess not three hundred and fifteen, because there's what, a hundred now right now in the commuter lot, something like that? Yeah, that's going to be a lot of traffic. It's going to be a lot of traffic in an area where there is not used to being a lot of traffic. Me personally, like I said, I'm from Austin, and I've kind of seen the effects of developers coming in and taking historically significant areas and converting them for uses of high residential use and the effects of what happens on the citizens surrounding those areas. It's not fun. Another thing we talked about is making this vertical mixed-use as opposed to being an apartment designation. Is this really vertical mixed-use? I mean, I, I, I know we've alluded to the fact that there's going to be a cafe there, but are any of the residents in Tech Terrace going to use this cafe? Is this going to be something that is really making it more vertical mixed-use than it would be an apartment complex? Because the way it comes across to me is that this is an apartment complex, and this is a, I guess, since we're going back to the whole zoning thing, this is a, a big, a big not-yellow square surrounded by a lot of yellow. So, another thing we'll talk about, being a student, I'll say, I'm twenty-seven years old right now, but there was a time when I was eighteen or nineteen, and I had friends that were eighteen and nineteen. And when it comes to things like parking, yeah, eighteen and nineteen-year-olds don't really have a whole lot of respect for, for parking too often. So it's going to be a lot of overflow. And, yeah, a lot of, lot of more cars, I guess, just amidst the neighbors in the Tech Terrace area parking about. And, listen, I'm not going to say eighteen or nineteen-year-olds aren't great drivers, but let's face it, a lot of them have gotten their licenses pretty recently, so it wouldn't surprise me if you got a couple more fender benders in the area as a result. But that's just something, we're talking about parking, we're talking about traffic. Something else I want to talk about, it's really significant to me, are zinnias and roses and chrysanthemums. These are all flowers that require a whole lot of sunlight, and when you take a sixty-foot structure that could be a maximum of seventy-five feet, that casts a pretty large shadow on the areas surrounding. So let's say you're a homeowner right, you know, right by this, this new, this new development. I'll, I'll cite back to my first-year property course. There's a thing called nuisance, which is the deprivation of your use and enjoyment of your property. And to me, if my zinnias got compromised because of dorm, blocked the sun, yeah, I think that would constitute as a deprivation of the use and enjoyment of my property. I wouldn't be too happy. I also am not too happy, because I love Cafe J. I mean, they're, they're, they're chicken fried steaks to die for. So, I mean, at the end of the day, I'm, I'm not against Texas Tech University. I'm a Texas Tech student. I think this is a great potential for a fantastic project. But we really have to consider, is this project, where it's located, really in the best of Lubbock's interests? I mean, let's think about, it's not, it's not just Tech Terrace. Is this really in the best interests of the heart of Lubbock? I mean, the developers propose that this is going to be a very prosperous and very beautiful dorm. It's going to have a pool, it's going to have pickleball courts, it's going to have all sorts of pretty amenities. But is that really Lubbock? Is that really, is, is, is a development like this of this size really, I mean, does it, does that match with what's surrounding? Families with their houses, their backyards, their dogs? I, it's just, to me, it doesn't make sense, because I, I go to, I go to J and B all the time, and that's what makes sense to me, is that houses surrounding there. To see this giant, both metaphorical and literal shadow, just, you know, a little bit to the, a little bit to the north of me, I just, I don't know, it just, it tickles, it tickles me in the wrong way. So, I'm not from Tech Terrace. I don't live there. But what I'll say is that I hope you all will listen to the people that do and the people that came here today to talk about it, because those are the people that live there. They have families, they have kids. And there are real, both, there are real traffic dangers, both with cars and human traffic. I mean, it's not just an inconvenience, this is a potential liability. We just heard the statement about, about a student who is, you know, tragically injured in a terrible car accident. If we have so many of these cars coming in this area, we've got to think not just about the students who are at risk, we've got to think about the children, we've got to think about the landowners in that area that are at risk. We've got to think about all these things, all these major concerns. So, I guess, all in all, think, is this in the best of Lubbock and its citizens? And I really hope, at the end of it, like I said, this is a zoning thing, at the bare minimum, just, this is a low-density residential area. Let's, let's try to keep it that way. Thank you.
Howdy, folks. My name is Ty Kreidler. I live at three thousand eight twenty-sixth Street. Appreciate the city council for everything they do, and my compliments to mayor and mayor pro tem. Appreciate everything y'all do for the city. One of the great things about a forum like this is that it, it allows citizens to articulate their concerns and hopes and dreams for the community. I know these are, sounds like fatuous comments from, from a guy that lives in that neighborhood who has some sort of self-serving agenda. Well, the self-serving agenda is that I want the same thing you do. I would like to sustain where I grew up. I didn't grow up here, but I grew up in a small town. How many of you grew up in a small town? Anybody here? This little neighborhood is one of those places where you can still find it. People come out of their houses, look around, see a neighbor, somebody's riding by in a bicycle, not in their car necessarily, heading down to the plaza, getting a cup of coffee, getting some groceries, taking a walk around one of two parks, one of which probably is one of the most visited parks in volume in the city. It's small-town America. It's fabulous. You know, there's a saying in the medical profession, "Do no harm." And I know we talked about a lot of legal things, a lot of issues, serious things, but there's ethics to be considered. Ethics that fill in the gaps of the things that were required to do. Ethics compel us to go the extra mile, to see if such a project like this actually is an emergency to save Texas Tech University from oblivion for the lack of housing. Now, I, I, I kind of overblow this a little bit, but I've heard the great presentation from the people that represent the project to be or hope to be. And, oh, it'll be great. It'll be wonderful. It'll help academia all across the country and inferring Texas Tech University out of a housing jam. Yes, we need it. We need it for the students. They need a place to live. Wrapped within that dialectic is the hope and dream that you will believe there's a housing shortage. There's not. In fact, there are two projects onboard at Texas Tech University, but Texas Tech, early on, has stood back and said, "They're not getting involved, they're not making any pronouncements. Everybody's on their own on this," and justifiably so. What do the numbers say? You've seen all the numbers from both sides. By and large, we are, in terms of student population, on a yo-yo. Fall's big, spring, it kind of recedes a little bit. There is a little bit of steady growth, but in the long haul, the word on campus, and I work there, is that they're going remote. It's virtual. They're even going compressed classes, eight-week wonders to get your entire college degree done. They don't even have to live here. Figure that into the equation. I know, we're not supposed to be thinking of all these things, but the promoters of this project are telling how much they are addressing all the needs in advance, whether they are we or not. So I need to address those needs and demands. And I'm telling you, that's the thing that I know, working at Texas Tech University. So I really would like you all to, to step outside the requirements of your duty and your jobs and say, "Is this project a good fit in terms of its size and its magnitude?" One of my colleagues here mentioned William Ward Watkins, who built the core of Texas Tech University in an architecturally splendid design. Central core, the key, the administration building, the engineering key, and all of that. Stupendous. Space, 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 open spaces. What do we have out here in West Texas? We have, we look out and we tell people, "Come on out here. Let's go outside the city limits." Tell me, can you see that in Massachusetts? We brag on it. We build it at Texas Tech. We have parks that reflect it. We have more parks per capita than any other major city our size in the country. I think we, in this project, are forgetting that. Elo Erwinowski, one of the successor professors at Tech, built on that tradition. He was a landscape architect and sustained it with those open spaces everywhere. Now, has there been creep? Yes, they put a dorm building here and another one here. They took up a place where kids used to play soccer and cricket. Yes, understand progress, but maintain the space because it's so important to the heartbeat of life in a community that needs it in order to survive. Sorry, I used to be a professor. Thank you so much.
I'm a very short person now. I'm shrinking in old age. City council members, mayor, city manager, Jared Atkinson, you've seen me at many meetings before. I thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'll try to keep this brief. I sent a very long email note, albeit with several errors, because I'm under a lot of pressure. I should be working right now on a presentation to present in Houston on Friday. But my father, who grew up in poverty and who bootstrapped in the military to become a full colonel, told me, "If you don't stand up for what is right or for what you believe in to be a voice in democracy, then you're not, you're not performing your role as a human being, particularly in our country." Anyway, what I, when I look at this building, I very much appreciate the effort and the communication of this new design team. But I am an art major, I'm an art educator. I see that building, and I think of the monkeys looking at the monolith in this two thousand and one Space Odyssey, this huge thing out of scale to those small, little creatures. This building's scale is not congruent with the rest of the buildings in the area. The unified development code is supposed to be protecting neighborhoods. And when I hear the presentation that this building is consistent with the surrounding area, I'm sorry, it's not. We have a hotel, we have an apartment building, we have mansions, none are over three stories high. They stay within the human scale. There is space around those buildings. I also am a mentor to students. I do not object to student housing, but when you pack in density that many students into one small space, you aren't creating an, a community, you're creating a profit-making machine. And this is not consistent with the neighborhood. Tech Terrace neighborhood has marvelous mixed demographics. That's why we chose to buy in that neighborhood. We love the fact that there are families, there are students, there are elders, there's a blind man who lives down the street from me, so I'm always calling LPD, to please come and ask this particular giant pickup truck to be moved off the sidewalk so that we can keep that avenue clear for our students walking to Roscoe Wilson, for that blind man, for our elder, Sandy, who lives one block over, who's on a walker. That's a neighborhood, that's a community when people care. Students packed into a high-density building don't have the opportunity to develop a sense of community, and I can tell you that for a fact, because when I was a professor at University of Texas at Austin, as I mentioned in my letter, I got an awful lot of students off of scholastic probation. And that's because nine times out of ten, I advised them to move out of their high-density residential buildings where they were surrounded by chaotic noise, doors slamming, soap operas right down the hall. They couldn't focus on their studies at all. But I'm also concerned with their safety. If you put seven hundred students in this one little block or five hundred beds, as it has been said now, whether you know it or not, Texas Tech workers time their movements on and off campus to drive their, based on the rotation of class schedules. Because they know on Tuesday, Thursday, most classes, I believe, are on the hour, whereas on Monday, Wednesday, they're on the half-hour. So you don't try to leave the campus during those times when you know students are transitioning because they are all over the streets and the sidewalks, and you don't want to hit them. Imagine, on those timed schedules, the students in that building will relatively be following a Texas Tech academic schedule, and they'll all be trying to cross Nineteenth Street at relatively the same time. Now, I know what's before you is an approval of whether or not to change the zoning. And I leave that decision up to you, but once that door's open, it creates an awful dire prospect that in the future, other property investors and developers will see an opportunity that if they just parlay for time and buy enough properties on one block, then they can combine them all and ask for a zoning change and put another high-rise density housing project right in the middle of a neighborhood. And before long, as the gentleman before me described at UT Austin, we now have downstate on the western boundary, the University of Texas of, at Austin, a demographic ghetto of high-density student housing that completely replaced the very charming neighborhood I used to walk through to get off the bus and go to campus. They bought up all that property, they raised it, and they put up high-density student housing. And Carol Henderson, who just retired from the Harry Ransom Center downstate, took pictures of that area for me and said, "The students don't feel safe at night. There's nobody on their porch, there's nobody keeping an eye out on zoning infractions." And there have been four murders in that area at night because it's not a community. Thank you.
Honorable mayor, honorable members of the city council and staff, I am Roger Settler, almost a lifelong resident of the historic Broadway corridor at twenty-one twenty Broadway. I represent the Congress of Neighborhood Associations, which are ten neighborhood groups who have voted unanimously to support our friends and neighbors in Tech Terrace and oppose this project. I would submit for your consideration the words of a great playwright, William Shakespeare, who many centuries ago wrote, "That there is a tide in the affairs of men, which if taken, if the flood leads on to fortune, but if abandoned, all is shallows and miseries." And there is a great tide, ladies and gentlemen, in our society and worldwide. a tide of populism that is sweeping the world. This populism has as one of its integral components neighborhood activism. The realization that people need to live and work in communities where they feel safe and in which they have an interest. Sadly, here in Lubbock, we haven't translated these populist principles into effect. Rather, we have a cabal of developers who seem intent on imposing on the community absentee ownership and artificially stimulated growth with taxpayer subsidies. The result of that, ladies and gentlemen, is going to be neighborhood deterioration. My colleagues, like Clyde James and I from Historic Overton can tell you a long, sad tale of neighborhood deterioration, beginning with the insertion of apartments on the single-family lots in the 1960s, the closure of Carol Thompson Elementary and Junior High in the 1980s, and the resulting neighborhood deterioration. And the developer's playbook is very simple. First, you close neighborhood schools. Something that's going on in our community as we speak. When you close a neighborhood school, you're going to force young families to move out of that neighborhood. This will result in further neighborhood deterioration. And the end result will be what we see in Historic Overton, 90% absentee ownership. If you look at Overton North, which I submit to you is a future slum. And yes, that will shock some people, but it is a future slum. Believe me, I live on Broadway. I know what's going on over there. And why is it a future slum? Because the people who built the multi-story units, which I might add, none of them are above four stories except the ULOFs, the structure. The people who built those have flipped the properties to out-of-town owners. And these out-of-town owners, absentee ownership, they simply don't take care of the properties the way the original owners and builders did. The result is neighborhood deterioration. And when you get that, you have all the attendant problems of congestion, crime, which we are all familiar with. If you, if you live in Overton, you see evidences of this every day. It's a sad thing. And I would have to say that whatever the merits of this project may be, it is based on two faulty paradigms. The first paradigm is the congestion. When I first met the late Ted Hogan Senior, he and I were down at the city council in the 1960s. I was a young student, yes, can you imagine, in the 1960s? Long time ago. Well, we were fighting the insertion of apartment houses on the single-family lots. They would take a single-family lot and put five or 10 units on it, always with the promise, oh, this won't affect your parking. Wrong. It did affect parking in the neighborhood and would cause deterioration of adjacent properties. That is a faulty paradigm. And this project, with its incredible density, taking a few lots on 19th Street and putting 500 students into that area, is that type of congestion that we fought for 50 years in Overton. The second faulty paradigm is assuming that students are peripatetic, that many of them don't have cars. I, I belong to a fraternity and we have over 100 members in our local chapter. Guess how many of them own a vehicle? Almost 100%. 14 of them own two vehicles. So the faulty paradigm that we're only going to use a 50% rule of thumb, parking spaces to units or beds, this isn't going to work, folks. Tech students come here from distant places and we have to face the fact Lubbock is a remote community. We're one of the largest cities in the United States that is 300 miles removed from other population centers. And as such, our remoteness necessitates that students who come here to Texas Tech, many of them from the Dallas area, the Houston area, need cars to come here. They need trucks to move their belongings. And they will keep either ownership or use of those vehicles during their time at Tech and they will flood into adjacent properties, deteriorating the quality of life. Texas Tech is very fortunate to have a neighborhood like Tech Terrace on its southern perimeter. Tech Terrace is the jewel of Lubbock neighborhoods. A lot of important people live there, professionals, people who contribute significantly to, to the community. Indeed, even members of our own council, to which I speak, live, live in this neighborhood. It is, it is a treasure. I'm frankly stunned that the developer cabal has chosen to go after Tech Terrace in this fashion. They went after Overton long ago and, and we know that quite. I thought they might go after Heart of Lubbock, Guadalupe Jackson, and oh, these, these, believe me, these are in the plans. But going after Tech Terrace, what a strange thing. And a sad thing. You know, when I went to London, I went to the great St. Paul's Cathedral and I read a plaque to Sir Christopher Wren, who built the cathedral, and on it were inscribed the words, "Simonam inum requiris circum speechi." If you seek his monument, look around you. It saddens me to think that George Hardburger, Ken Abraham, these property owners, want their legacy to be a high-density student housing project. Really? Is this the legacy you want to leave the folks? I think not. As I conclude, I would like to ask all of those who are opposed to this project to stand and show your opposition. As you see, just as we had in Overton a, a few months ago, there is a lot of opposition to this project. I implore you to look in your hearts, just do the right thing and just say no to this terribly inappropriate project. Thank you.
Good afternoon or evening, mayor and council members. My name is Kay Overly. I live at 2515 22nd. And I'm not going to rehash over everything that's been said. I agree with what's been said and I ask you to deny this change in zoning. But should it survive to the second reading? I think it'd be a great idea to perform some kind of study, to look at the impact on traffic and to look at the impact on the neighborhood before passing it completely. So that is my request in the alternative of denying the zoning application.
I'm Teresa Greer and I live at 2517 22nd Street. I've been there since 1995. And we have probably had traffic problems there that have been, become even worse in the last five years. 22nd Street has become a feeder street off of university. We have, I was able to get parking for eight to five on the south side of the street, but not on the north. And as you've heard, as people go on down 22nd Street, they have no parking. I mean, they have no parking signs, permitting cars to be on both sides of the street. When you're driving and knowing that this neighborhood is, you know, my house was built in 1936. Our streets are very narrow where we live. We don't have streets like some of the places in, you know, Tanglewood or Rush. So when you have two vehicles, when you have a vehicle on each side of the street, then whoever is coming down that street is going to have to pull over to let somebody else through. All I'm saying is that we've got problems now. If we add 500 more students and just like everybody said, they're going to come with cars, the biggest majority of them. We really are just asking for you to consider, look at what our predicament is now. And maybe, we're not opposed to something being there, but just not us having a zoning change to enable any of this to go on. It's, once this is passed, the zoning is passed, then why should they feel any need to negotiate with Tech Terrace or anybody else? So all I'm asking is, is you take this into consideration. Thank you.
Sid Seidman, 3202 20th Street. Mother lives still at 2709 25th Street and has since 1963 when we moved here. We do value our neighborhood. And, and I know you're all very tired of hearing that. But Tech Terrace is the only residential anchor, the only secure residential anchor to Texas Tech University. You look at the University of Houston, which lost 100% of its residential anchors. It's dangerous to get to and from that campus. And it's a wonderful campus and a wonderful university. That is one fear that I, I have and believe is valid. I agree with 100%. There are people much more eloquent than I am. Two fears I have. Think of Park Tower. My grandparents' home was torn down in order to build Park Tower many, many, many years ago. The neighborhood never recovered. Now, there are other factors obviously involved in that part of town because we moved southwest. So, but take it for what it's worth, it never recovered. I have no idea what Park Tower is right now. But my fear is, it may already be a public facility corporation, which I don't know how many of you may be aware of that. When, when, when a complex gets built, apartment complex, student housing, whatever, gets built, private like that, if it, on the first or second or third time they try to sell it, doesn't sell, that's a valid option for it to go into a public facility corporation to apply for that with the state of Texas. It becomes low-income housing, all sorts of metrics and standards apply to it. But it is no longer a taxable entity to the city, so any financial bonus that this property ever had is now lost to, to everyone. And, and that is a fear I have. I think of Park Tower standing stark and strange, so large compared to the, the single-family homes that were around it. And it's disturbing for me to even see it down Avenue Cube, which is where I spent a lot of my early childhood. That is a real and valid concern with the property that's so out of scale to everything else. And the second thing, anything we talk about parking, we don't necessarily mean parking. We mean the congestion and the unpleasantness of living somewhere that has all of a sudden changed for every one of us rapidly and, in our case, without merit. We're not investing in a property we're going to sell in three or five years, which 100% of their properties do. Any development like this does. They're held for that first sale where you make your 12% to 20%. Developer gets a big waterfall. The owner gets a nice chunk of change. After that, nobody cares. They'll have a second and third and eventually deteriorates, whether it's in 12 to 15 years or 30 to 40. It's going to happen. We need to be prepared and to have that in your brains as you're talking about changing a zoning to a, an application of zoning that is radically out of scale with our poor little one-square-mile. Thank you very, very much.
All right. I see no one coming forward further in opposition. One of the drawbacks of having me as your mayor is I drink a lot of coffee. And one of the advantages of being mayor is I can call a recess whenever I want. So we're going to take another brief recess before we come back so we are all focused on our discussion here. All right, we're back. And if... I don't have a mic. Do I have a mic here? All right. If there are no other people to speak in opposition, I will now close this public hearing at 5:50 and we will move on. So, is there a motion to approve item number 6.7? Got a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All right. Open for discussion. Anyone wishing to be heard on this issue? Please let me know. Mr. Harris?
Yes, I want to thank everyone for coming out today and expressing your true feelings about Tech Terrace. But I came to this council to try to make this city a better place, to involve myself in economic development. Lubbock, to me, has just been sitting on the back burner of everything. And me personally, I feel like we need to start moving forward as a city. Me personally, Lubbock, Texas is like 50 years behind when you go to other cities. We need to grow. We need to think about our kids, their future. So I just thought I'd express that to you all to let you know that's the reason why I sit on this council is for economic development. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Anyone else wish to speak? Mr. Gashin?
I would also like to say thank you to our friends and neighbors who came out to, to speak about the project today. And I think we all care very deeply about our, our neighborhood. I do believe that ultimately this, this zone change is appropriate and it's going to be a good thing overall for the neighborhood. But also want to say that we're committed to address any issues that come up as, as a result of the project. So if we need to increase parking enforcement or change resident-only parking requirements, that's going to be part of the, the long-term commitment that we make to the neighborhood.
Any other discussion? All right, I'll make my comments here at this point. This is, I think most everybody who's spoken today understands this is a, a decision about changing zoning for this property. You know, we all are property owners here and we all are concerned about our ability to use our property to its highest and best use as far as what we see that as, as our, as a property owner. And I think it's important to realize that, you know, regardless of what we do on this property, there's going to be an increase in density. There's going to be increase in traffic. There's going to be parking because it's, it's empty at this moment. Something will eventually go there, whether it's student housing of this density or student housing of a lower density. But I'm pretty sure it's going to be student housing as well. I mean, the fact of the matter is this property is located directly across from Texas Tech. And Texas Tech is not going anywhere. I would distinguish this from something like Park Tower. Texas Tech is a constant in our city. It's going to be developed. And it's going to be developed most likely as, as student housing. But our zoning exists to protect private property owners. Our zoning is, exists to try to make sure that things that are built on property are appropriate next to whatever they're adjacent to. So you have single-family residences, you have low-density residents, then you have a high-density development like this. The question is, is this zoning change, will that result in... Obviously, it will result in a good use of the property. I think we, as a city, look at that as good use of the property as far as taxes are concerned. Just purely as a budgetary item for the city, it will bring in taxes for us. If we just looked at it on that basis alone, we could see that as a good thing. But our zoning exists. And when you live in a city, you don't have unlimited rights to use your property any way that you want. So, you know, these are the two things that I think come into play as we try to determine how we're going to do this. And it's balancing all those interests to make sure that whatever is built is appropriate. Some of you talked today about amendments to the UDC that were proposed by the Tech Terrace group. I supported those amendments. I think that would have been an appropriate way had we taken advantage of the opportunity at that time to address these issues through our UDC. And then we wouldn't be sitting here with this issue today had we been able to do that. But that wasn't the will of the council at the time to do so. I think that issue is still there for this neighborhood, for any neighborhood. It's something we have to wrestle with. Is... It's something we have to wrestle with, is, we have a UDC that allows something in a high-density residential area for vertical mixed use that I believe is not really properly designed to be adjacent to, right next door, to a residential neighborhood. But nevertheless, that's the UDC we have at the moment. And the proposal that's come forward from Mr. Pearl Mutter and his group, you know, comports with all the requirements of the UDC as it currently exists. And I think he's done a wonderful job. He hasn't addressed, everything would be my concern, but most of what he's tried to do with his proposal actually, in many ways, reflects what my concerns were about the problematic issues of the UDC as it currently exists. I do have a question of why, if they've been able to build units that housed, you know, 380, 440 students, this one has to be, you know, almost 600 students on that piece of property. But I figure he's done his best work on this in attempting to design something that is economically viable for him, but also addresses, as far as possible, the concerns of the neighborhood. So my issue here is really with the UDC. It's not with Mr. Pearl Mutter and his project, it's with the UDC as it exists. And I think it's problematic. I think it's something that needs to be addressed. I wish it had been addressed earlier, it has not, and so now here we sit. So those are my concerns, those are my issues. Anyone else wish to speak to this matter? Okay. Then if there is nothing further, we will call for the vote, and I believe we will have a recorded vote on this. Can you bring that up, Jimmy? And to remind people that this is a supermajority vote that is required on this issue, so it requires six votes. All right. It passes, six with one abstention. That concludes this matter. There are no further other issues to deal with today. This meeting is adjourned.